I am here.
All right, well, the VIP is here, so we will start up. This is our October 19, 2021 Regular Council Meeting. Calling to order, just a notice to the public that the City Council may vote to go into Executive Session for legal advice and discussion on any of the agendized items. Roll call, please.
Mayor DC.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Present.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Salas.
Physically present.
Councilmember Shimonie. Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
All right, Councilmember McCarthy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Would you please stand if you can? My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation under guard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilmember Aslan, would you read our mission statement, please?
I'd be happy to. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Yeah, Ms. Haltberg.
Mayor, if I could please note, Councilmember Shimonie has joined us. He is connected virtually.
Excellent, thank you. We do have, we're down to Agenda Item Four, which is our public participation. We do have a couple of participants here. Ms. Deb Harris, would you like to come up?
I kind of do this so I can not fog my glasses up, if that's okay? I don't know, is that all right?
We'd prefer if you kept it on, my apologies.
Okay, well, I'll take my glasses off and hopefully I'll be able to read. Okay, so Deborah Harris, 25 West Soap Creek Trail. I'm here tonight talking on behalf of the Southside Community Association. Just first of all, want to hope that you're all well. And I see that you're all here, so I'm approving, assuming that you are. Also, just want to let you know that the Southside Community Association Board meets on Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Murdoch Community Center. We are able to social distance. CDC guidelines will be in place. And we want to talk specifically with the city, Northern Arizona University, and our police department regarding Greek life on campus and the Fontaine Street party that was held on Saturday, October, whatever it was. And we have some specific concerns. And we also want the council members to be there if at all possible. And I know you all have to announce those things. And so our part, our concern is, is that we're past the, the stage of asking. Now we're demanding that the city does something about issues with partying and city ordinances related to that. And especially in communities like La Plaza, Southside, and Sunnyside. So if you have any questions, you can feel free to contact me later. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. So this is your invitation to that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Mr. McCarthy, because it's public participation, we're not able to.
I'm going to just go ahead and do it anyway. Could you repeat, could you repeat the time and the date? And it's at the Murdoch Center?
Yeah, it's at the Murdoch Community Center, 203 East Brennan Avenue. It's at 6:00 PM on Thursday, the 21st, I believe that is.
Thank you. All right, another public participant, Jenna Weldon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor DC. I'm going to need to pull up a presentation real quick. Is it showing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So. So I'm Jenna Weldon of the Beautification Arts and Sciences Program. My comments are shout out for the first of the 2021 Traffic Signal Cabinet Art Wraps. It is entitled Kululela, excuse me. The artist is Dana Camber, and the installation will occur in the next two weeks. The location is the northeast corner of Butler Avenue and Beaver Street. Because of the high profile of this corner, we took some extra steps. We included a council member on the selection panel. And after their recommendation, in addition to B-PAC, we also took the design to the Southside Community Association for additional outreach. This is what will be on the front of the two cabinets that is facing the intersection. The artist took her inspiration from an Ali Ekerman poem called Kululela. Sorry, I keep tripping over that, which addresses unspoken histories. The artist, in addition to working as an instruction assistant at the Flagstaff High School, is a graduate student of interdisciplinary art, which investigates representation plus community action through artistic means. This is the backside of the cabinets. Through an, over her conversation at a bus stop, the artist, who has lived here for a mere six years, realized that she did not know much about the variety of histories that make up this incredible city. Specifically, the conversation she overheard addressed the lack of remembrance of Black history in the city and their rich contributions in the lumber industry. Thus, her art pays homage to this work. As it is, as stated on the side panels of the artwork, a history worth knowing and a story worth telling. We are also working on an addition to the artwork with the Arizona Historic Society. We hope to gather particulars of this history on a website page hosted by the society to which people can link through a QR code sticker to be added later this year. I thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you. This looks exciting. The next public participant is Lena Wellen.
Mayor and council, good afternoon. I am so happy to be here. And I want to thank you and express my appreciation for the proclamation for Indigenous Day two weeks ago. And with that, we reflect our respect, recognition, and appreciation. And we did it, for example, for Agassir Road, that the community would urge the council, change it to the WC Riley. And, and I really appreciate that very much. So in the proclamation of Indigenous Peoples' Day, I'm as a community member and also as ICF member, really just like feel that we still have Columbus Avenue in our city. And the thing that, to reflect that we respect the Native people. We really, well, I personally, because I don't represent anybody, so it's like I really propose to have that change. I know that's already in discussion for a long time to change that. And I propose to have it, so it's like to become Lori Payastewa Avenue. If that is in Phoenix, that's Payastewa Peak, how could we not have it here? So that I really hope that the council, that will be considered in your deliberation. And we, I think we already had discussion in previous one. So I really thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that the last public participant for this Agenda Item?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. We're down to Agenda Item Number Five, which is the approval of minutes from previous meeting. The consideration approval of minutes for the council regular meetings of February 4, 2020, December 16, 2020, retreat of December 16, 2020. The budget retreat of December 17, 2020, special work session of August 17, 2021. Special meeting, executive session of August 24th. Special meeting of September 7, 2021, of September 14, 2021. The executive session of September 14, 2021. Special meeting of September 21, 2021. Special meeting of September 28, 2021, and special meeting of October 5, 2021. Any concerns? And I'll just say, I did cut out like half of those words, just to get the dates. Yes, let's motion it.
I move to approve briefly, item 5A.
I second that. I have a motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. We are down to the City Manager Report. City Manager, Agenda Item Number Six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, good afternoon. This report, as it does once a month, touches on some work anniversaries. I will mention a few of them briefly and then ask that we single out a few employees who deserve special recognition because of their tenure. But starting off, if I may, we are celebrating work anniversaries in the five-year category for Police Officer Cody Roberts, Court Judicial Specialist One Sasha Ashley. In the tenure category, we have Emery Pesenger with Public Works. He's a supervisor. And in the 15-year category, we have Jennifer Shaver, Creative Services Specialist, and Katie Brown, Fire Engineer Paramedic. Also, Tim Harrington, Water Services Manager. In the 20-year category, we have Christine Cameron, our Project Manager Senior, and I think we'll be hearing from her today. Also Benjamin James, Solid Waste Lead Worker. The three individuals that I would like to bring special attention to include Fire Battalion Chief Eric Caputo. Eric Caputo is one of our thoughtful leaders at the Fire Department. He just completed a two-week Deputy Chief Shadow Program, demonstrating his commitment to the future leadership of the Fire Department in the greater Flagstaff region. His participation in the Honor Guard has been an instrumental part of our annual September 11 commitment to never forget. We've enjoyed having Eric in the Shadow Program at the Puzzle Palace, and he's looking forward to getting back to his shift. So we thank him for his amazing service to the organization and to the community. I don't know of Fire Battalion Chief, if you're with us, but if you'd like to pop up on the screen and say a quick hello, that would be great. He is not here. Okay. Next, and congratulations to Chief Caputo. Next, we have Ryan Dar, who's serving as an interim Deputy Chief and is just back on from his holiday, so I think he is going to be joining us. Ryan was hired by the Police Department in October of 1996, completed a criminal justice degree at NAU while finishing up an internship prior to his appointment. After the academy, Ryan spent several years in patrol, in patrol, and served as a field training officer, number of other credentials that are listed. Today, Ryan serves, he oversees our Criminal Investigation Section and is serving as the Acting Deputy Chief, as I mentioned. Additionally, he serves on the Executive Board for the Victim Witness Services, Silent Witnesses Board, Domestic Violence Fatality Review Board, and he leads our Hostage Negotiations Team, and other credentials, as you see. So I'm not sure if interim Deputy Chief Ryan Dar is with us, but if so, Ryan, we'd love to hear from you as well.
Mayor and council, City Manager, thank you. I am here. It's a pleasure to be here. And the best part of being here for 25 years is you usually outlast all your critics.
I don't think I can top that, interim Deputy Chief. Thank you for being here, and I know you took extra measure to do so because you just returned from California. Welcome back, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service. Finally, Mayor and council, we are celebrating a 31-year work anniversary with Martha Villalobos, who serves as Library Specialist. She first came to the city organization on October 16, 1990. The following comments are what Martha's colleagues would like to share about their wonderful coworker. Martha has shown versatility and adaptation to meet many challenges over the course of her 31 years at the County Correctional Facility Library. Martha is committed to her work and is resourceful in carrying out her daily duties following the protocols as a City of Flagstaff employee. She works as a team player with her counterpart Sharon Tafoya at the Jail Library. Together, they make selections for library materials while weeding out outdated and damaged materials. They also ensure that acquisitions are provided to inmates in a timely manner. Martha is courteous, patient, and respectful with both inmates and prison authorities. She's bilingual with a fluency in the Spanish language, which is helpful, wherein translations are requested among Spanish-speaking inmates involving access to the library materials. Martha resolves matters with cool and calm demeanor and is always willing to help with tasks that arise, including sorting out materials coming back from the inmates. During the pandemic, she has re-allocated a portion of her time to work at the East Flagstaff Library, helping with staff with the curbside holes. This has been a very successful program. This has been fortuitous for the local community so that they can receive library materials in a timely manner. A quote from Sharon Tafoya, Martha has shown dedication, devotion, and patience while providing library, library materials to inmates, always maintaining her composure and professionalism. From William Essarza, and I hope I pronounce that name correctly, Martha is an invaluable asset to our organization, performing library duties to an inmate population in need. Martha, you make your colleagues proud and you shine upon this organization in the most positive way. We hope that you keep smiling, and we thank you for being a part of Team Flagstaff. Martha, I'm not sure if Martha is with us, but if so, we'd love to have her pop up on the screen and share a comment or two.
Yes, I'm here.
Good afternoon. I want to thank you for taking time and spending time with us at the council meeting, where we are honoring you, Martha. And we'd love to hear any comments that you might want to share. I just got finished reading an awful lot about the very good things that you do for the city and for the community.
Thank you. Well, this, this is a surprise. All I can say is 31 years doesn't seem that long. And I spend it all at the jail. And I know, I'm very proud of what I do. I love helping people, and I hope I am making a difference with the inmates.
I assure you that you are, and thank you so much. And thanks for being with us and sharing your comments and your face with us this afternoon. Much appreciated.
Thank you so much, Martha.
Thank you very much.
That concludes the work anniversaries, Mayor and council. I'd like to move on to another thing that we'd like to call out for some specific discussion, and that concerns the Municipal Court, specifically the courthouse, the new courthouse. And I will not recite everything that's in the manager's report, but I will summarize by noting that the new Flagstaff Municipal Court, which is a three-story, 40,000-square-foot building, which came at a cost just south of $20 million, is a Green Globes certified facility. The courthouse replaced a pair of obsolete, functionally inadequate buildings, which, by the way, are being demoed at this, at this moment. Serving as design-build contractor Kenny Construction Services, which we know as KCS, worked collaboratively with the City of Flagstaff and the architect, CGL Companies. Design engineering support was provided by Energy Systems Design, Inc., Crusoe Turley Scott, CTS, and Shepard Wisnitzer, I hope I got that right, SWI. Lot of names there, but there's a lot of accolades to go around here. The courthouse is the recipient of two prestigious awards, architectural awards. And they are noted, and we have pictures of them in the manager's report. And then second, I'd love to hear from Jessica Cortez, our Court Administrator. And there's a quote from her in the report. And possibly hear from Christine Cameron, who helped oversee this project. Of course, we extend our props to Kenny Construction Services and the entire team, as I just noted. Jessica, are you with us?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Greg, want to thank you for the opportunity for giving us a few minutes to speak about the awards. As noted in Greg's report, the Flagstaff Municipal Courthouse received the two awards from the Arizona Masonry Council. The first was a Citation Award, and that's for non-residential. And the second award was the Craftsman Award, also non-residential. The award program recognizes outstanding masonry projects featuring brick, block, and stone. And the project team really appreciates the recognition by the Arizona Masonry Council for the courthouse project. I would like to now turn it over to Christine Cameron, our Project Manager.
Thanks, Jessica. Yeah, we're, we're really happy with how it turned out, and we're so proud to give this facility to the community. You know, the exterior finishes are in large part to the work of, of the design-build team, which was Greg mentioned, or City Manager mentioned, CGL, KCS, and the Court and Prosecutor Staff. I mean, they, they took time to, to go and look throughout the community and for examples of architecture and design that, that really complemented the existing surroundings and, and pulled regional materials into the design, like the red brick, the actual color of the grout, and, and the red sandstone. It's been supported by the public, and we've received a lot of feedback on, on how it is now, the completed project. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you, Jessica. Council, I thought that you and the community would appreciate that. Any comments? Otherwise, I can conclude my report here in just a second. We're all good. Okay, thank you. There's a few miscellaneous updates. I will not belabor. Please spend some time going through that at your leisure. I do want to single one thing out. I will not talk about it at length. It's a precursor to, I think, a work session that will be coming your way in the weeks ahead. That's the four-fry update. We had a nice meeting with reps from the USFS and our Fire Water Protection Program Manager, Neil Chapman. That's a mouthful. To discuss the four-fry and related topics, there's actually some good outcomes to show for that meeting. They are referenced in my report, and there's a link there that will give you some good helpful information. I invite you to read this because I know there's been articulated concern about the cancellation of that program, but frankly, there's a lot of good news that are coming out of that. But again, without belaboring, I would invite you to give it a read and inform yourselves when you're ready on this important topic. And then you can expect an update regarding our FWPP, the Watershed Protection Program projects that are in, in the queue now and in, on the near horizon. And we will touch on the four-fry matter as well, and you could expect that in the weeks ahead. Any questions?
Questions, council?
Thank you.
Thank you for a thorough report, as usual, City Manager. That brings us down to Agenda Item Number Seven, our Council Liaison Reports. And I will go around, I think I did this side of the room last time. So Councilmember Salas, any liaison reports?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I attended a two-day gathering of boards and directors of 10 metropolitan planning organizations and councils of governments representing Metro Plan Greater Flagstaff, the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council Strategic Advance, that was the first day. And the second day was dedicated to Rural Transportation Summit, where each MPO and COB made a strong case of our respective need for additional state funding for our transportation projects. Metro Plan submitted the project to include additional funding for Lone Tree Corridor. So the advocacy is toward putting together and submitting a proposed bill at the State Legislature, asking a one-time funding for $50 million. And Metro Plan will receive $2.6 million for the Lone Tree project. We were able to connect with many legislators, specifically the Senate Transportation Committee Senator Pace and the House Transportation Committee Chair Representative Frank Carroll and House Majority Whip Leo BSUchi. Also interesting to note that the summit, her presentation from the Federal Highway Administrator for Arizona, the State Engineer Dallas Hammett, and Representative from, from many federal organizations discussing future, future options and opportunities to seek grant funding at the state and federal level for transportation, for carbon neutrality, for resiliency, and transportation emergency. So if you have any further question about the regional transportation priority list, I have a copy here, and I would love to share that with you. Thank, and yesterday, as the Council Parks and Recreation Commission Liaison, I attended a long Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission meeting. There were a lot of members of the public advocating for pickable, pickable courts in town. And, and staff had provided an overview on a potential option in terms of innovation collaborative and grants. And that conversion will continue to, to, to evolve. Noting that our Parks and Rec staff pros now, pros have, have repurposed the tennis courts in Ponderosa Park and has now two pickleball courts. Also, the Parks and Recreation is, is engaging the public for the Thor Park Annex, which will start next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet, do you have anything for us?
Thank you, Mayor. I am in Tampa, Florida, at the International Downtown Association Conference. And I will look forward to giving you an update on the wonderful things I learn next week. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
McCarthy.
That's your name.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. I attended the State Transportation Board last Friday, virtually. And I made a comment on behalf of the city and also as the Chair of the Metro Plan. And the comment I made had to do with the thing that Ms. Salas just talked to you about, the ARTAC proposal to get some funding for all around the state, but of particular interest to us is for the Lone Tree Corridor. So I did make that comment during public participation. The other thing I'll mention is that I attended a panel discussion, I was a panel member at the Flagstaff Leadership Training. And Stacy Forbar, our intrepid Assistant City Clerk, was kind of overseeing that event. And thank you for inviting me, Stacy. I, I think it went really well. We had a pretty lively discussion with questions and answers going back and forth. And then the last thing I'll mention is I did attend the Pedestrian Committee Meeting, which is a subgroup of the Transportation Commission. And we had a discussion about roundabouts and other related things. So that's it for tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Yeah, earlier today, I was in the Diversity Awareness Commission, where we discussed the fair item on inclusive bathrooms signs to make sure that we move that forward. And then also, the presentation regarding climate resiliency that we were able to receive from the graduate students from NAU was presented to the Diversity Awareness Commission, which I'm really glad that they chose that format because it is climate resiliency and is inextricably intertwined with historical segregation and the neighborhoods that are disproportionately hit. So it was a good discussion and a different perspective than some of the other forums and formats that that presentation has been presented. Other than that, that's what I got for the liaison. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I had my Northern Arizona Municipal Water Users Association meeting with other municipal water users across Northern Arizona. And the reason why I mention this is I just want to give a shout out to staff member Erin Young, who gave a wonderful presentation to the entire group about conservation measures that Flagstaff has taken and just kind of a history of some of our water projects. And that, it was good for me to have that as a refresher, and I learned some new things, too. On the housing front, we are in the process of gathering public comments. Staff has presented to EKONA, to the Northern Arizona Association of Realtors, had a virtual meeting with City of Flagstaff Commissioners. Today was Friends of Flagstaff's Future. Next up is the Chamber of Commerce and the Coconino County Continuum of Care. The next public outreach meeting is October 27th, and this is your opportunity to hear about the plan, ask questions, provide feedback. And there's an online forum where we are asking you to please, please, please give your input on this plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shimoney, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do, thank you, Mayor. Last week and today, I was able to attend the ATMP Open Houses that occurred. And for those that haven't attended one, there is one more, I believe, next Wednesday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Staff, do correct me if I'm wrong, but that will be, I believe, the last one before it then continues on its journey through its public review. But great conversations being had and just appreciation to staff for putting that on. Last week, a group of us were able to travel down to visit the Mesa, Arizona Temple of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints and just had a wonderful time in that experience and appreciate everyone who helped to set that up. And then last Friday, I was able to do a ride along at our fire station, Station Three, with Captain Joe Toth, Engineer Will Gianola, firefighter Jake Kosa, firefighter Riley Reese and Engineer Jason Beller. And just wanted to thank all those individuals for hosting me for 12 hours and getting a real inside look at what it is that they deal with, day in, day out, and the work that they do. So that was a real great, insightful experience. So thank you to Chief and Seth with the Fire Department for helping to set that up. And then last but not least, there was an Indigenous Commission last week, and I was not able to attend, but I look forward to hearing more about the conversations that were had and seeing how that impacts, you know, our future discussions and decisions. So thank you to the Indigenous Commission. That's all from me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Asslyn?
I was out of state on a personal trip this past week. Don't have much to report.
All right. That brings us then down to our COVID-19 update, agenda item number eight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm bringing up my presentation. Can you see that okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So for this evening, I have the COVID-19 update. Rose Tohe is out of town this week, so I will be covering the data from Coconino County Health and Human Services as well as Northern Arizona Healthcare, in addition to the Navajo Nation and Hopi Tribe statistics, and then providing a brief update on the Indigenous nations and what's happening both for Navajo and Hopi tribes. So when we're looking at our number of weekly cases, we're seeing that we are on the second week of a downward trend, starting at 405 cases, week of September 25th, and ending with 353 new cases this most recent week on October 9th. Looking at our COVID-19 cases by geographic area, the City of Flagstaff is still the highest for a number of new cases, followed by our tribal communities. The hospitalization for Coconino County residents has seen kind of an up and a down tick over the last couple of weeks, certainly seeing our lowest number this week of October 9th that we've seen in some time. And our largest age group being hospitalized due to COVID is 20 to 44. Looking at our COVID-related deaths, there have been zero reported for the week of October 9th. Please keep in mind, sometimes there can be a few week delay in this data, so we will continue to keep an eye on this to let you know what happens a few weeks down the line. For instance, the week of September 25th originally had reported that there were two COVID-related deaths, and we now have three. No changes yet reported for the week of October 2nd. Looking at our community transmission rate, we continue to be in high overall. That's really being driven by the number of new cases per 100,000, which is at 249.5, as well as our percent of positivity is in our moderate category at 6.8%, which is an increase, a slight increase, from the two weeks prior at 6.6%. And then our percent of COVID-like illness has declined over the last two weeks from 7% to the 6.4% you see before you. Our number of community members here in Coconino County that are vaccinated has increased slightly, but we are seeing a lower number of vaccines being provided each week. Two weeks ago, we had 59.1% of our community vaccinated, and we are now at 59.7% vaccination. Individuals who have not been vaccinated or has a friend or a family member who hasn't been vaccinated, please feel free to visit the Coconino County website. They keep that up to date with the various locations that you can receive COVID vaccine. Looking at our variants, you will see two new ones, the Epsilin as well as the MU. Those are variants that are being monitored, but still the only variant of concern is our Delta variant. Over the last two weeks, we've seen an increase in the number of samples showing a Delta variant from 796 to the 1,110 on the screen. Looking at the Northern Arizona Healthcare Hospital Census, we have 33 positive cases and zero pending cases. They are showing a capacity of 224 hospital beds out of their 268 that are licensed. And then moving on to the critical care, they have 41 licensed beds, and those are all available, and that was as of October 15th. The Indigenous Nations data for the Navajo Nation, as of October 14th, the Navajo Nation reported for the 13-day period since our last report that was provided to you on October 1st, that there's been 2,405 new confirmed COVID cases for Navajo Nation. And there has also been an increase in our COVID-related deaths of 16 over this 13-day In the past 20 days, the Hopi Tribe has seen 400, excuse me, 45 new cases. Gosh, not 400, that would be horrible. But 45 new cases over the last 20 days. Navajo Nation, their updates include the public emergency orders are going to remain the same, which means they have gathering limitations in place. Individuals must wear a mask while in public, and the business and schools are still complying with the orange status of their plan. They also talked about the ARPA Fiscal Recovery Fund allocations, which equaled $389 million of interest. There's $185 million that's connecting homes to electricity, septic and water, as well as broadband, the last and middle miles. $12 million will be going to the Department of Health, and this will be for COVID testing, emergency food assistance to high-risk patients, medical transport for COVID patients, mobile medical units, as well as personal protective equipment. There's $31 million that's going to the Division of Economic Development for Artesian and Business Economic Relief Grants to Navajo Nation businesses. There's $6 million that's going to their judicial branch programs and courts, and this is to address backlog and to facilitate court and program operations. $8 million of the ARPA funds will go to purchase heavy equipment for the chapters. This includes backhoes, vehicles, trailers and tractors. There is $2 million that's been set aside for burial assistance due to COVID-related deaths, and $145 million has been retained for the executive branch programs and offices to implement programming. When we are looking at their health advisory, good news is, is they are now showing 33 communities for COVID health advisories. This compared to 40 in the previous reports, we are seeing a reduction. Moving on to the Hopi Tribe, they did announce that Sonome Transit Services resumed schedule back at the end of August. And there are two stops here in Flagstaff. I've listed the specifics of when they arrive and when they depart daily. Also included in their update was that customers must wear a mask and pass a temperature check to participate in these transits services. Moving on, continuing to message the importance of vaccines for everyone ages 12 or older, as well as wearing masks and washing frequently of hands. And then the last piece in the Hopi Tribe update was that they're in their third part of phased reopening, which means that face masking is required inside of all public buildings, common areas and outdoor locations when folks are unable to distance. Employers may resume unrestricted staffing of work sites. And lastly, businesses must be able to demonstrate social distancing and protections for staff. So that's all I have for you this evening in today's COVID update, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Any questions? Councilmember Asslyn?
This isn't so much a question for the Deputy City Manager, but it's probably the appropriate place to bring it up. Last week during Two From, I mentioned something about the idea of allowing public speakers to remove their mask for the three minutes during their public comment period. I remain committed to pursuing this. I feel strongly that that should be allowed and it's reasonable. And just wondering for an update on how we discuss that or come to an arrangement about
Councilmember?
We saw just today, Ms. Deb Harris was hoping to take her mask off so she could read from her prepared remarks without her glasses fogging up, and I believe that's a reasonable request. And I don't, I don't think there's any particular health risk to one individual for up to three minutes or less being able to express themselves, both visually as well as with their, with their voice.
So Councilmember?
Yeah, I will just state that that's a can of worms. I don't care to be opening. We do have restrictions within the city, in city facilities right now, based on administrative decisions to protect the safety of our staff and the individuals who come into this, into this facility in general. And I feel like creating exceptions in that case is going to open up a larger discussion on if people need to be wearing them while they're sitting in the chairs.
I don't think it's a can of worms, but I think it's pretty clear that when there's, when they're an individual speaking at the mic, they have up to three minutes and we should be able to see their faces. But anyway, this is more of a process question rather than trying to get into a debate at the current time. So just curious about how to, how to proceed with this.
Yeah, City Manager, if you would like to speak with that?
Yes, thank you. Respectfully, we did advance the suggestion. We talked about it internally and we did pull some council members, and we were just lacking support to go forward with it. But I don't want to, I want to be careful here in noting, it was given careful consideration, and we totally respect the intentions behind it, as you have articulated. It is very awkward to present. It's very awkward right now to talk with the mask on. It's something we've all, you know, had to live with over the last couple of years. But the outcome of all the discussion we've had, council members is to not have exceptions. One thing I will note for you, and it's probably a statement of the obvious, is we are livestreamed and of course, our speakers are video streamed as well. And so we felt it was a good and consistent messaging to have everybody wear a mask, especially noting that we're in front of the cameras. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I was not aware of any of those internal conversations or received any update about how that went. Maybe we can revisit that as soon as reasonably prudent, and I, of course, am very respectful of the will of the majority.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, if it may not be appropriate now, we definitely should revisit it because the numbers are going down, and maybe a month from now, we can revisit it. The other thing, as a footnote I'll mention, I mentioned before, I was on a panel discussion where I was the Flagstaff Leader, Flagstaff Leadership Training. And everyone in that room had a mask on. However, they did allow the four panelists, myself and three other people, to take their mask off during the discussion. And then after the discussion, we put our mask back on. So I think we can bring it back. We're probably not ready to do it yet, but we'll reconsider in a month or so, I would suggest. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Deputy City Manager, could you please go back to the slide on the NIH Hospital Census? Yes, thank you. I would like to note the critical care capacity of our hospital right now is at the maximum. The bed capacity is maxed out for the licensing, 41 out of 41 beds. Our hospital is no longer reporting staffing levels, which have been in the past at a critical shortage. Though you may feel that it is a good thing, I do too, that numbers are going down, we are still in a crisis situation for the amount of capacity our hospital and our healthcare providers can do right now in this city. And I'd like to point out, too, we are entering respiratory season, which means that more people with influenza A, pertussis and other issues, when the hospitals tend to be spiking, is right around the corner. So I am urging everyone to continue with taking the mitigation efforts that we are. It is a very, very serious situation when we are at full bed capacity in our hospital in critical care. So I just wanted to point out those numbers while we have this discussion. Yes, Councilmember McCarthy?
Shannon, maybe you can come back on. My understanding of this chart is that under critical care is that there are licensed for 41 critical care is that there are licensed for forty-one critical care beds, and forty-one of those are available and not being used. Is that correct, Shannon?
That's my understanding, but it sounds like Mayor DC's understanding may be different.
Well, could you maybe look into that for our next update and elaborate on that? Thank you. Just something that we're all speaking the same language, so to speak.
I will tell it. Thank you. Yeah, I would like the clarification, but these numbers have been, the higher that number of the blue bar is not the available beds. That is the number of cases. There's not, we don't, I mean, it's not zeroed out that the hospital is empty all of a sudden. So yes, please provide that clarification. I just want to point out the severity of the situation. I know we're all tired of COVID. We're all tired of masks, but the threat is real, and it affects all other healthcare issues that our city faces when you can't get a, when it's a delay to get a bed for a broken arm or any other medical issues. It affects the healthcare of the entire, tire network, the entire system for our city. So, thank you. Any other questions right now for this agenda item? All right, I'm not seeing anything. So we are down to appointments, agenda item number nine. This is the consideration of appointment for our Sustainability Commission. Staff recommended action is to make two appointments to terms expiring October 2022 and two appointments to terms expiring October 2024. And I do believe Councilmember Solis is the first four nominations.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I am honored to recommend the reappointment of Ms. Kristen Conkle to serve on the Sustainability Commission for a term expiring October 2024.
I'll second that.
All right, a motion by Councilmember Solis, seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Next is Councilmember Sweet for the next appointment.
Thank you, Mayor. I am honored to recommend Margaret Diger to the Sustainability Commission for the term expiring October 2022.
All right, I will second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next is Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a preference. Mayor, if you would like to take the 2024 appointment, but I was gonna appoint April Smith to a, to, to a two-year term expiring in October 2022.
Yeah, well, that would be, yeah, that would be one year, but we will go with that. I will second that.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye? Any opposed? That carries. And I would like to appoint Molly McCormick to an appointment to a term expiring October 2024.
I enthusiastically second that.
All right, enthusiastically seconded by Councilmember Aslan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. I mean, aye.
Any opposed? That carries. We are now down to agenda item number ten. This is the liquor license public hearing. I would like to open the public hearing now and open up for the staff presentation or a few words. And this is, sorry, my apologies, the consideration and action on liquor license application for Andrea Lukowitz High Country Motor Lodge and General Store at 1,000 West Route 66 for a Series 10 new license, which is beer and wine store, and Series 11 hotel motel new license.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor Brian Charlie with the Flagstaff Police Department. I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding the liquor license in front of you. I found no derogatory records for any of the applicants or the business. Thank you.
Thank you. And I understand the applicant is online if the council does have any questions regarding this. Do we have any questions at this time? All right. With that, I'd like to close the public hearing, and I will, I'd like to move to, let me get the right wording for you. I'd like to move to forward the application of the state with a recommendation for approval. Have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. We're now down to agenda item number eleven. This is our consent items. This is the consideration of ratifying grant agreement, ratifying the grant agreement between the City of Flagstaff and the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration for Airport Rescue Grant Program, funding for operational and maintenance expenses directly related to the Flagstaff Pullian Airport. Staff recommended action is to ratify the grant agreement in the amount of one million nine hundred ninety-four thousand and sixty-three dollars for airport operational and maintenance costs.
Actually, Mayor, just a motion to approve the consent item, items as presented would be sufficient for this.
All right.
As well as the next subitem B.
Thank you. Do I have a, a motion on the table to entertain? Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve consent, all the consent items, eleven A, eleven B for approval.
All right. I have a-
I'll second.
A motion by Councilmember Solis, seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? Councilmember McCarthy?
Yeah, I just, I support this, but I just want to, just kind of point out to the public that it's interesting that the airport gets substantial subsidies from the federal government, in this case, a couple million dollars. So when we're reviewing, like, should we keep Amtrak and those things, let's bear in mind that this mode of transportation is very strongly supported by the federal government. Therefore, it makes some sense to support other types of multimodal transportation as well. Anyway, I do support this, though. Thank you.
Well-stated, Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. We are down to agenda item twelve A. This is our routine items. This is a consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2021-18, an ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of real property interest for the Beulah University Roadway Project, providing for delegation of authorities, severability, and establishing an effective date. Staff recommended action is to read ordinance number 2021-18 by title only for the final time.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Bryce Doty, real estate manager. No presentation tonight, but I do have a quick update about this item. For those of you with better memories than myself, this ordinance was originally brought before council on the July 6 meeting of this year. We delayed the second reading to allow for any modifications arising from council's discussion of the pipe, the bike, and pedestrian design components. That discussion happened two weeks ago on October 5. We now feel comfortable proceeding with the design and with the authority to acquire that's granted in the second ordinance. Since that initial reading, our design consultants did update ten legal acquisit, or ten legal descriptions on this, so the exhibit is updated to reflect those, and they're no longer referred to on the map. We also removed five acquisitions because we no longer needed them for the project, and that they were already, or they were already owned by the city. And then we added two additional acquisitions. That's BU 13-1, which is three hundred and eighty-four square foot easement for the bus stop, and then 15-1 is an eighty-four square foot public utility easement. And that's all the updates on this ordinance. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Doty. Go for it.
I move to read ordinance 2021-18 by title only for the final time.
A motion by Councilmember McCarthy. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Oh, Vice Mayor beat you to it. Seconded by Council, Vice Mayor Daggett. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor, can I jump in?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, thank you. Just want to make sure I missed my opportunity. Bryce, I don't know if this is a question for you or for Rick or for Jeff, but we've had a significant amount of public comment regarding those, that roundabout since that discussion a couple weeks ago. And basically, I guess my question is, would adjustments to the plan that are minor in scope impact the decisions, the decisions we're making tonight?
If there are, thanks, thanks, Adam. If there are any designs that require additional property acquisitions, we will have to go back to council in a different ordinance for those particular properties. But that's the only thing that would change. But, you know, we go through these ordinances for every single property acquisition, so it's not a big deal if there are minor modifications, and we would have to add additional property interests.
Okay, thank you. And I don't think what I'm looking to see adjusted would require additional property acquisition. It's more just the setup, just little tweaks in the setup to make it more friendly to the bike and pet community. But we can dive into that later offline, but I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something on this agenda item. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion on the table? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
An ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of real property interests for the Beulah University Roadway Project, providing for delegation of authorities, severability, and establishing an effective date.
I move to adopt the ordinance just read.
A motion by Councilmember McCarthy. Do I have a second? Shimoney, you can have this second.
Yes, second, thank you.
There you go. Cool. Seconded by Councilmember Shimoney. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Agenda item thirteen is our regular agenda. Thirteen A is the consideration and possible adoption of resolution number 2021-44, a resolution authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the Milltown Development Agreement between Vintage Partners LLC and the City of Flagstaff related to the development of approximately eighteen point one one acres of real property generally located at 1801 South Milton Road. Staff recommended action is to read resolution number 2021-44 by title only. Mr. Barrett?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I am Rick Barrett, City Engineer and Engineering Director. The item tonight is, as you mentioned, the Milltown DA Amendment. So this item very generally does allow the city to take over design and construction of the Beulah Extension, the university realignments, as well as the Milton Underpass or the Bike Ped Tunnel, one and the same. So the design and construction of all that has been done together, and we want to keep it that way. The original DA actually requires that the developer deliver these projects. It's just become obvious that the city needs to take over this project, and the developer agrees. So hopefully, council agrees with that as well. This DA amendment also provides for the developer payment of the tunnel that the developer is responsible for. So all costs associated with the pedestrian tunnel or the underpasses I mentioned before are to be borne by the development of the project, all design and construction, that is, just to be inclusive. So the DA also talks about how one point six five million dollar payment will be made upfront, called the fixed payment, and, and that any amounts due for the rest of the cost of the tunnel, including, again, design and construction, would be made up to five years after the tunnel's completion, and that the, the developer is going to provide us a substitute security in the meantime that equals that difference. So with that, I just wanted to provide that brief update, and please know that we have Christina Rubiclava available with me tonight, as well as Tiffany Antle, our planner on the project. And if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer those for you tonight.
Thank you. Council, do we have any questions at this time? All right. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Would that entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, and then after that, I'd like to make a brief comment if we get a second. So my motion is, I move to read Resolution 2021-44 by title only.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Solis.
So my comment is that I think when the Presidio condos came before us, that was a DA modification, very similar to this. And I think the lesson learned there was that when something, when appropriate, that we would, you know, maybe do some public outreach to make sure that affected parties were aware of it. I believe that in this case, that would be unnecessary, but I'm just sort of reminding staff to keep that in mind for future DA revisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. We do have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving right along here to agenda item thirteen B.
Actually, Mayor, we need to-
Oh, my, sorry, City Clerk. Go right ahead.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the First Amendment to the Milltown Development Agreement between Vintage Partners LLC and the City of Flagstaff related to the development of approximately eighteen point one one acres of land located at 1801 South Milton Road and establishing an effective date.
Thank you, City Clerk.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-47. Is that the correct number?
Forty-four.
Oh, I'm sorry, forty-four. Yes, the one just read.
A second.
See, I'm not the only one trying to jump ahead here. I have that, a motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Solis. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Now, we're on to agenda thirteen B, which is the consideration and adoption of Resolution number 2021-47, a resolution approving binding waivers of enforcement for seventy parcels of land located in the City of Flagstaff. Staff recommended action is to read Resolution number 2021-47 by title only. City staff?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Christina Rubalcava, Senior Assistant City Attorney. I do have a brief presentation. So this is, this item is to resolve seventy Prop 207 claims that were filed with the city. On November seventeenth, 2020, so November of last year, the Flagstaff City Council adopted ordinance 2020-28, which made amendments to the Flagstaff zoning code. And these amendments regulated what we now call high occupancy housing and added that land use. And some of the regulations that we see are requiring a conditional use permit for high occupancy housing, restricting high occupancy housing of four units or more to the pedestrian shed of an activity center, and adding various parking, bedroom, bathrooms, and other requirements. During the months of July, September, and October, the city received Prop 207 claims on behalf of seventy parcels of land within the city, and the claims by the owners are that as the result of the HOH Code amendments, their properties lost a collective- their properties lost a collective $51 million in value. Under Arizona statutes, ARS 12-1134, also referred to as Prop 207, that statute provides that if the existing rights to use, divide, sell, or possess private real property are reduced by the enactment or applicability of any land use law enacted after the date the property is transferred to the owner, and such action reduces the fair market value of the property, then the owner is entitled to just compensation from the state or the political subdivision of the state that enacted the land use law. And so the process is that the landowner makes a written demand for a specific amount of just compensation to the city. And the city has 90 days then to either pay the demanded amount, amend the law, permanently, or permanently waive enforcement of the new land use law on the landowner's parcel. And that last piece is what we're here to discuss tonight. If the city does not act, then the landowner may file a claim for just compensation in Superior Court within three years of the date that the land use law took effect. And just compensation for diminution in value is the reduction in fair market value of the property resulting from the land use law. And it's otherwise looked at as the most likely price which the land would bring if exposed for sale in the open market by a purchaser who buys with knowledge of all the uses and purposes to which it is adapted and for which it is capable. So if approved by council tonight, then the city will agree and declare that the HOH zoning code amendments will not be enforced nor applicable to the entirety or any portion of the 70 properties that are listed in the binding waiver of enforcement, which is attached as Exhibit A of the resolution to this agenda item. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rubiclava. Council, do we have any questions at this time? I'm not hearing anything or seeing anything, so happy to entertain a motion.
I move to read Resolution 2021-47 by title only.
You have a motion by Councilmember McCarthy. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Have that seconded by Councilmember Shimoney. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Moving right along here, folks.
Still got to read there.
Yep. All right, City Clerk.
We are rolling right along. A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving binding waivers of enforcement for 70 parcels of land within the corporate limits of the City of Flagstaff.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-47.
Motion by Councilmember McCarthy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Down to Agenda Item 14. This is our discussion items for the Lone Tree Overpass Project Update. City staff?
You took me by surprise. I thought you might break first. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm Christine Cameron, Project Manager with Capital Improvements. And this is our presentation on the Lone Tree Overpass. So, a little bit of history. There was a concept study that was performed in the mid-2000s that was presented to the community and to Mayor and Council and approved in 2010. It went through concept development and public process at that time. And it provides for an additional north-south corridor over the railroad and the future Rio de Flag alignment. It also provides congestion relief in our transportation network, enhances connectivity and circulation, and increases safety. It's much like our Forest Street Bridge over BNSF corridor over by the Aquaplex. In 2018, through Proposition 420, we were funded in $73 million. So it was approved by the voters. In February of this year, council awarded... Oh, yes. Sorry. In February of this year, council awarded a design bill contract to a design bill team that includes Ames, our contractor, and WSP, our design consultant. And since then, they, we've been working on further development of the approved concept, data collection for the traffic impact analysis, coordinating work with BNSF Railway, the Army Corps, and ADOT, and we've begun property acquisition and relocations. With early direction from council, we've also focused on enhancing and building upon the concept for bike and ped accessibility and safety. In addition to the overpass, a portion of the Lone Tree corridor to the south will also be enhanced down to Sawmill Road. This is to provide a corridor with consistent improvements for the public. And the corridor funding was passed as part of Prop 419, also in 2018. So for our agenda tonight, I'm going to do a project overview. And then I'm going to hand it over to the design team for discussion on the traffic demand model, intersection types, greenhouse gas analysis, and then I'll be back to talk about project aesthetics. So we have presented to the Transportation Commission, Sustainability Commission, and the Bike and Pet Advisory Committees. We also had a public meeting September 30 to take the project public. And now we are, we are here at council. So our next steps after tonight will be to take the input that we've received on the presentations, on early design. And we'll be back before you, hopefully in November, to present a contract for substantial design completion. One thing you will not see yet in this presentation tonight is the economic impact analysis. That report is still undergoing review with city staff, and that will be presented at a future meeting. In the meeting tonight, aside from myself, we have got Rick Barrett, our City Engineer, Jeff Baumann, our Traffic Engineer, Sarah Dector, our Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Manager, who is pretty much our South Side Community Plan Expert. And Sustainability Staff is also joining us. We also have the designer and the contractor, and I'll let Jason Karloftis, the Design Lead, introduce his staff. So the voter-supported goals of the Lone Tree Overpass, again, are to provide congestion relief in our transportation network, enhance connectivity and circulation. But this is also a community project that has a role in climate action and in bike and ped safety and accessibility and the South Side Community Plan. And so we look forward to a well-rounded, robust conversation tonight. So I'll go ahead and jump into our project overview. So this is our project map. In order to get the whole thing on one page and as big as we could get it, we skewed it a little bit. So north is to the top right. The red and purple show the corridor improvements area, with the red being roadway and the purple being our, our bridge area. So from north to south, we've got the Route 66 corridor. The Route 66 corridor, and there'll be a new intersection with ADOT at the new Lone Tree and Route 66. To the south of that, we have the BNSF Railway corridor. The railway would actually be lowered and moved to the south in order to get the bridge over. We've got in yellow, the Rio de Flag, the future alignment, which will be an open channel in this area. The alignment you see in the green is what we're calling the Eldon Corridor. It's also called the Eldon Cottage Extension. And this is due to the fact that Brandon Avenue will no longer go through into the industrial neighborhood. And so in order to provide these people over here that own parcels and operate businesses access, this Eldon Corridor was, was approved in the concept study, again, in the late 2000s. We also have the South Side Community Plan that designates some of this area for civic space and also bike and ped facilities. So we have two community plans, you know, included in this general area, and we're working to accommodate both. So this area will be a road corridor and a separated bike and ped facility. Moving further to the south, we have Brandon Avenue. And this is the new intersection with Brandon and Lone Tree. And again, it does not continue all the way to, to the east. It's a right-in, right-out only on Brandon. And then for those people that are going north on Lone Tree, they will not be able to take a left-hand turn onto Brandon because there's going to be a median in the roadway there. And then further south, we've got Butler Avenue. And, you know, Lone Tree Road goes down to Franklin Avenue and Sawmill. So all of that area is included in our project. So we're going to jump down a little bit. Further down in detail, this is the area that's the southern portion, so the corridor portion of the project from Butler Avenue to Sawmill Road. NAU and the South Side Community is on the left-hand side. Aspen Sawmill is on the right. And we also have a, a street section that has been developed for this area. It includes two travel lanes in each direction, here and here. The foots alignment stays on the west side of Lone Tree Road, but that's actually modified in this section to, to be a 10-foot bike lane, dual-direction bike lane, and then a separate, a full separate six-foot sidewalk. And then on the right-hand side, we have a, a single bike lane facility, six-foot, northbound only, and a six-foot sidewalk. And so from the original concept, in the corridor, or in the overpass concept, we, you know, we really tried to make bike and ped improvements. And one of the ways is to, number one, make the lanes narrower from a 12-foot to an 11-foot, you see here, and pull those bike facilities up above the curb, past the parkway, so there is separation between vehicular travel and bike and ped travel. So going further north, this is our overpass area from Butler Avenue up to Route 66. Again, we have two travel lanes in each direction at 11 feet. And on the overpass section, the main difference from this in the south area to the south of Butler is that instead of the parkway, we have a barrier on the bridge. Though we have the same foots connection on the west-hand side of the road with the 10-foot bike lane, the same six-foot sidewalk, and then the northbound path, and then the sidewalk on, on the east side. And these, the paths and the sidewalks are actually larger and wider than were presented in the concept also. So this is the area of improvement around Route 66 in the green. This is ADOT jurisdiction. We've finished up the draft traffic impact analysis, and they have that for review right now. The improvements will go about 700 to 800 linear feet in each direction, towards Eldon, and then towards the east. And this is to provide the turn lanes and, and match in. We are, Capital does have a design for foots on the Mesa up to the north that we are looking for ways to connect that foots down into the Lone Tree corridor. And most of our widening will be to the south, and that's City of Flagstaff and BNSF property. And again, we have a cross-section on the bottom of the screen. This is, again, ADOT jurisdiction, so we're following their, their road section with the addition of narrower lanes at 11 feet instead of the 12. So I'm going to jump out of this and show the flyover we have. It doesn't like to act right in the PowerPoint. So I'll play this one time through all the way, and then I'll, I'll go back through and kind of pause here and there and show some aspects of the project. I know, it does need some music to bite in.
I want IMAX.
Then we have some fly unders here of the bridge showing the Rio.
So again, this is the Eldon Corridor area
here, and the Rio de Flag, and then the BNSF corridor, and then the proposed intersection with Route 66.
Vice Mayor has a question for you.
It's unclear to me how traffic, how people driving cars know what to do once they hit 66. I mean, I get you go left or you go right, but is there a light there? Is there...
There will be a light there, Vice Mayor. This is, again, this is kind of our first edition of, I know. This is our first edition of, of the flyover and a lot of the exhibits that you see. It doesn't have signalization yet. Something, again, we wanted to bring this to the community and to Mayor and Council early in the process to kind of show you our progress to date. And so, yes, there will, there will be a light here at Route 66, you know, directing people east and west. There will not be any through to the north. You can see our foots trail drops down underneath the bridge also and continues through. This is the area, again, of the Eldon Corridor. And this is an area that is required for detention for the project. But we've also, you know, have ideas of integrating that into a future civic space for South Side when they are ready to design and build their facilities.
I have a question. This is a good place to stop for it. Is there a reason that median is so wide? Or is that just simply because of the existence of turn lanes at either intersection that needs to be maintained throughout the width of the bridge?
Mayor, Council, exactly. That's because of the turn lanes. And Jason Karloftis will be going over kind of the, the layout of those turn lanes. So, and that is Brandon coming in. And that's where that median I talked about for no left turns into this neighborhood on Brandon. So back to the presentation. I'm going to bring Jason Karloftis up with WSP. He's going to dig into the more technical details of the traffic demand model, the intersection preliminary design.
Thank you, Christine, and pleasure to be here with you all this evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Jason Karloftis. I'm the Design Manager on the project, representing WSP. We do have Chris Keane, the Project Manager with Ames Construction, on the line. I have several design team members as well standing by. Joe Vaskevic, our Traffic Engineer, who developed, helped develop the TIA's online. Frank Fry, roadway design. And Sophie Cohen, who's our economist, who helped with some of the greenhouse gases that we'll get to later. Sustainability-type questions, I'm here to support, so. Sustainability type questions, I'm here to support, so hopefully we can answer any questions y'all may have. We'll start with the travel demand model. This model was developed in coordination with Metro Plan. As Christine mentioned, we did have a traffic impact analysis that we developed during this first phase of the project, during schematic design. This traffic impact analysis, the goal was to determine what the impacts of this project would be on the existing traffic network, street network. In the Flagstaff area. And so we worked very closely with Metro Plan on this modeling effort and impact analysis. What you're seeing here on this slide is the 2026 average daily traffic volumes for the build and no-build condition. So the volumes you're seeing here in red is the average daily traffic for a no-build condition if Lone Tree was not built. And the black numbers are if Lone Tree is built. The reason we picked 2026 is that's the anticipated opening year of Lone Tree. So just sort of walking you through the opening year numbers, and what we're trying to highlight here is. Change the pointer real quick. The, the big key is you can see on opening year of this project, Lone Tree is projecting, based on the traffic modeling, to be a highly-used arterial roadway for the traffic network, getting almost 38,000 cars a day, the opening year. This particular area of the Flagstaff network is pretty unique. You have the BNSF railway going through several north-south street networks. You got Milton, Beaver, San Francisco, and then you got Ponderosa. Of those, only Milton's a grade-separated crossing. So everywhere else, whenever a train comes by, traffic has to stop. Lone Tree would provide another grade-separated crossing, meaning traffic can go continuous regardless of whether or not a train is crossing the, the corridor. We term that as a screen line for our work. And so by providing a second option, you're providing an attractor for, for users who want to cross north-south through this corridor. So generally Milton, you're seeing a reduction of about 8,000 vehicles daily. You're pulling about 7,000 and 8,000 vehicles off of Beaver and San Francisco Street. So those get a substantial reduction in north-south vehi- vehicular traffic. And you're getting a reduction of about 6,000 vehicles projected from Ponderosa. To get traffic from Milton over to Lone Tree, you're getting a slight, a small increase on Butler. About 6,000 to 7,000 as people are moving east-west. You're also getting some volumes from the south. This collection of 37,000, 37,000 vehicles is coming from multiple directions, east-west and south. And then from the downtown area along Milton, you're getting a rejected decrease as well. But the pickup in volumes headed eastbound from Lone Tree. So generally what your flow of traffic is, it's, it's coming from east-west and south. Attracted to Lone Tree, and then your projected volumes increase to the east. But generally, your downtown area traffic is projected to go south. So that's what our traffic model is showing, based on Metro Plan. Now that, when this model was built, we did use Metro Plan's current modeling. We did update the model for several land use changes, for example, the hospital that's being relocated. We did incorporate that change into our models, we tried to make it as up-to-date as possible. We also used a program called Streetlight, which uses phone user data that tracks origin, destination, to see where users are actually starting and ending their trip, destination, origin. So we did do some calibration of this model for, specifically for this project. And then calibrated this model to be as accurate as, as we can with the best data and tools we have available. Looking at 2040, this is the plan year that currently Metro Plan's built out to. You can start to see the volumes based on their projected growth. Do you start to catch up? And you start catching back up between Lone Tree and Milton. So some of the gains and shifts that we saw coming from the reductions on Milton start to catch back up. Because now you're balancing out volumes based on growth between Milton and Lone Tree. But you're still seeing quite a bit of reduction on Beaver and San Francisco. Still have a reduction from 14,000 projected to 4,000, and 15,000 to 4,000. And you're still seeing a reduction over on Ponderosa of about 20,000 vehicles a day to 9,000. So what we're seeing really is, is Lone Tree is providing a, because it's a grade-separated with BNSF, it's really becoming an attractive route for users headed north-south across Flagstaff.
Yes. Vice Mayor and then Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you. I'm wondering whether you looked, I see these numbers on Beaver and San Francisco. And I'm wondering what the impact is on. I know that you can't speak to what the impact is on businesses, but by having lighter, having fewer cars coming past their business, does this also, do these numbers equate up north of 66 as well?
So, are you guys concerned about an economic impact? So we have done an economic impact study as well, the draft report is in with the city for review. So we are going through that process currently. Some of the, the concepts, we talked about the impact is what, how much of that business is destination business? So are you going to that business because the business is there, or is it pass-through business? So that's, that's some of the, the details we're still working through with that draft study. I believe the plan is to present that data at a future council meeting. Yeah, so we are gonna, once that draft's been reviewed by the city, we'll be presenting that information to council in the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember McCarthy.
So you're showing substantial reduction in traffic on Milton. I presume that's Milton north of Butler. What about Milton down south of Butler? It probably won't be as significant.
So I, I'm not as deep into the, the traffic demand model. Our traffic engineers were, were more into this traffic model. But you add up the totals you're seeing here, you're pulling about 7,000 vehicles from Milton itself. Going east-west along the corridor, but let me go, let me go back to the 26 year. But you get 37,000 vehicles going onto Lone Tree. So that's, you're pulling other vehicles from the southwest and southern and southeastern regions to get to that 37,000 vehicles. So it's being pulled regionally. Whether they start on Milton and head to Lone Tree, or start in the NAU area to the south and come up. I'm not sure exactly where on, where they begin their journey from Milton over to Lone Tree, they could become up other avenues. But we can look into that and try to get that data to.
So if somebody's at NAU, for instance, they may decide to go east and then go up Lone Tree. Where now they might go west and then go up Milton. So that would be a reduction.
Possibly, correct.
On the other hand, if, you know, people were coming from, say, west Route 66 and then go over to Milton. And then they go up and turn right on Butler, that won't help the Route 66 and Milton intersection much.
Yeah, well, we are seeing a slight increase on Butler. You do see the, the numbers increase from 21 to 28. So we are seeing some of that Milton to Lone Tree movement. But not as much as you would expect to see to make this 38,000.
So if you revise this, again, it might be interesting to kind of differentiate between south of Butler and north of Butler on Milton. Because it could be a very different story. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. From the network model, we then started looking at the intersections, specifically at Butler and Route 66. What you're seeing here is a visualization of the vehicles per hour. So now we're looking at level of service of the intersection. How well does this intersection work, based on the, the peak hour volumes? For these intersections, the PM traffic, PM traffic is the controlling intersection traffic. These color coding is based on the volume and the recommendations of what that volume from, from a traffic perspective would recommend. So if you look at the bottom here, if you start green, the recommendations based on, you know, studies and, and data from, from traffic engineers. Green would indicate a, a single left turn lane would be appropriate, and as you get to a red coating, a double left turn lane is likely to be recommended for level of service. For through lanes, about 450 vehicles per hour is about your break point. Green is one lane, again, two lanes is red. And then right turn lanes, anything greater than 300 vehicles per hour would likely recommend a dedicated right turn lane at the intersection. And then left turn lanes, it's about 300 vehicles per hour is when that brake comes in. So visualizing those numbers up at the intersection, we thought that'd be more helpful than just having raw numbers up here. You can see that it, this is at Butler and Lone Tree. So you got Butler going left to right, you got Lone Tree going up and down. You see the key takeaway is, is that there are recommended rights at almost every direction, just based on the predicted vehicle turning movements. For the through movements, coming northbound on Lone Tree and eastbound on Butler, two lanes are recommended for both directions. And then we are also looking at the numbers that because of the heavy through movements, eastbound on Butler. This is a, the westbound left to south is a borderline turning movement because of the heavy throughs to clear the intersection for west turns. The early recommendation would be go to a double left at this intersection. It is a borderline movement. It's a yellow, so it falls right between the decision point between a single or a double left. But with the, the green times and yellow times, even if you had a permissive left turn with yellow, you have such heavy through movements going eastbound, that you wouldn't be able to clear the left turn queue without a double left. So that's why you see this here stripes in the background with a recommendation of a double left. But we're still evaluating these intersections. We have at this point in our intersection decisions, you know, we've, we've done the data collection. We've looked at the regional models and what the predicted peak vehicle hours, and we have talked to stakeholders, obviously. So we're all early in the design, but this is currently what the numbers are pointing us to. Same with southbound Lone Tree to eastbound, based on the, the volumes, we are recommending a double left, southbound to eastbound, from Lone Tree to Butler. So those are the volumes of Butler and Lone Tree.
We do have a question from Councilmember Shimonie on line.
Okay.
Councilmember?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, quick question. So can you talk about the differences in time between a double left and a single left for some of these? I mean, are we talking about a minute delay for a vehicle? Or we're talking about 15 seconds delay? Can you speak to any of that?
Joe, are you on the line? I'm gonna try to hand this over to my traffic engineer.
Councilman Shimonie, Jason, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, in terms of the, the time, maybe ballpark 30 seconds difference, to give a number there. It'd be more, it'd be less delay if we had the double left than if we had the single left. The single left would queue back from the intersection quite a ways. So some of that trade-off i- in the queue would be a reduction in the delay.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. And then a quick follow-up, so, so just to confirm, we're talking about 30 seconds between a single left-hand and a double left-hand, right? Approximately.
Approximately.
Okay. And then can someone also speak to the intersection size in terms of, through the lens of a pedestrian? And the public safety of potential incidents and collisions and deaths? Anything like that that we can point to?
Yes, so Councilmember, we'll, we have a little bit later on in the slides, actual.
Okay, thank you.
Intersections, I'd like to get to that question when we show that, if, if you're open to that. If that's acceptable.
Yes, absolutely, thank you, absolutely, thank you.
So we did the same exercise at Route 66 and Lone Tree. We again, looked at the peak vehicle hours, again, the PM peak controlled. The AM was close as well. But looking at the, the peak hours, the eastbound rights and the northbound rights both warranted a dedicated right turn. Obviously, coming up at a T-intersection at Lone Tree, a dedicated right and dedicated left are easier because you don't have a through movement to also contend with. We also had heavy volumes going eastbound, as we mentioned earlier in the regional model, that's our heaviest volume coming through this intersection, based on predicted volumes. That does warrant a double lane coming through. Going westbound, there, we are at a decision point between a single lane and double lane. But again, as a reminder, this is an A-dot facility, and they have maintained that they will require a double through westbound at all times for this intersection. They want no reduction in service through their corridor for this intersection. Westbound, northbound to westbound lefts also have high enough volumes that we are recommending a double left through this intersection. This is another one, later on, we will also have intersection layouts, we have two proposed intersection types for this intersection later on. We'll walk through that and some of the pedestrian multimodal impacts as well later on. Any questions on this one?
I'm not seeing any, go ahead.
Thank you. So intersection selection, you know, early on in the process, we, we really wanted to be involved. We understand the city, communities, and commissions' concerns about what these intersections will ultimately look at, look like in the multimodal impacts. And how do pedestrians use the intersection, how do cyclists use the intersection, it's not just the vehicles. This has been part of the design team's thought process from the beginning. There is a national code that you're seeing up on the screen, the, "Don't Give Up at the Intersection." This is a guide about how we enhance safety and usability of intersections from a multimodal user perspective. And when I say multimodal, I'm referring to the pedestrians and bicyclists who use streets and intersections to, to, to get around. So it's recognizing that intersections and roadways are not just automobile use, uses, it's, everyone's using these. So the intersection on the right, this is not what we're proposing for Lone Tree, but it's an example of some enhancements that come out of this guide from the National Association of City Transportation Officials. So before we get to the intersection examples that we've developed for this project, sort of want to just walk you through some of the guidelines and examples that come from this guide. So there are several options that they recommend to enhance user safety. A lot of these are ways to enhance visibility of the bicyclists and pedestrian users at intersections. What you're seeing here is a figure straight out of that, that guideline. Several things you are seeing here is you get staging areas where you're separating pedestrians and bicyclists. We all know bicyclists and pedestrians use intersections and use roadways differently. So one thing NACTO talks about is staging them separately. They're gonna enter the sidewalks, or enter the crosswalks at different speeds. They're gonna want to enter at different times as well. So that's what is showing here is staging areas. Another recommendation that comes out of this guide is to set the stopping bars further back from the intersection with the goal of enhancing visibility of the users. If, if we have a staging area where users can be seen and the automobile user can see these people crossing more clearly. Where we're not checking just out their left window, but can see that there's people on their right that are about to enter the intersection. They're more aware of them and are more likely to yield to them. There's colored crossing and guidance signing to help users through these intersections. This is also an example of pulling cyclists, like what we have here, where we have the foots trail and the northbound bike lane, where we actually pull them off the, the roadway system and get them off to the side of the streets and keep them into the intersections. So these are several recommendations that come from that, from that guideline. There's also with the, with the rounded corners in these islands, you also give enough room for automobiles to potentially queue and yield partway into the intersection if they have a secondary user coming through at a separate time. So this is a figure we've, we've considered, you'll see later on how we can incorporate some of these elements into these intersections. In practice, these are some examples of these concepts. You can see here, here's a striped staging area, so it doesn't even have to be necessarily a concrete or raised island. This is a striped example. This could be considered for street maintenance operations, snow removal, if, if that's a concern, or they just didn't have the infrastructure funds to pay for a raised island. Could also do special enhanced visibility sidewalks, different types of sidewalks that make it more visible. Guide signs, we talk about a northbound cyclist lane on the east side of the roadway. Having that clearly signed, so users know that it's northbound only would help minimize impacts from cyclists using it the wrong way. We've also talked about having islands and medians. In addition to the staging areas out in front, if we do have a dedicated right turn lane. This, in our discussions, this would be a stop-controlled right turn lane to, again, protect the users. If this is an uncontrolled continuous right, and again, this is a decision, we're still talking in design, it can lead to potential. talking in design, it can lead to potential impacts if, if this user, as a vehicle user is not expecting to stop, they may not always be aware of the potential multimodal user coming across. So if this is stop-controlled, there's a safety, and then if we have an island out in the street, this now shortens the distance a multimodal user, bicyclist or pedestrian has to cross. Instead of crossing three lanes, they're now just crossing two lanes. Hence the safety by shortening the crossing time of the roadway. Wider medians, providing a refuge area out in the center turn lane, so instead of a four or six-foot median, you go a little bit wider and provide a true refuge area if you have users who can't cross the street on one signal phase. And we have separated bike lanes, which I know there's discussions of installing something similar along Butler, where you actually protect the cyclists and users on the roadway when you're not separated off the roadway like we are here. Um, some other concepts that we're not showing here, also enhanced intersection signalization to make drivers aware. You can have the flashing bulbs or high-visibility signal heads just to make drivers aware that there's a signalized intersection coming up. Um, options for the vehicle user that we've considered this intersection are what's called the offset lefts. So what you're seeing here are three concepts. Traditional intersection has a negative offset. What this means is a user, as you're approaching the intersection, you store to the right of the median, your visibility for oncoming traffic is blocked by the oncoming left turn. You don't have high visibility. So by shifting this left turn user further and further to the left, you increase visibility. So removing the median, you know, you get a zero offset. May not be ideal for multimodal users though, because now you're losing the refuge. Well, what if we look at a positive offset? You keep the median, but now you shift to the left turn user all the way so where their direct visibility is oncoming users. This has been shown to reduce, uh, left turn to oncoming movement, uh, collisions just because their visibility is better. So these are all concepts we're, we're considering for these intersections. These are some of the concepts we've asked for feedback from when we reached out to the public and to the commissions and look for continuing feedback, um, as we present this to, to more and more folks.
Can you go back to the, yes, thank you. So in the third positive offset, if there is a cyclist at that intersection that would like to turn left, where are they?
So cyclist could either enter the street and join into the left turn lane like a normal vehicle user, or in the case of Lone Tree where they're out on the, the side of the road, they would cross in the crosswalk like they normally would with, uh, you know, with the pedestrians or cyclists and you could have a refuge island in the median and then do a two-stage crossing, or you can do a single-stage crossing with the timing. So it behaves just like a normal crossing, just your median is shifted to the other side of the left turn users. Um, so now we're gonna get into the intersections themselves. So these are renderings of the intersections at Butler and then we'll get into Route 66. Um, so we did consider several intersection types at Butler and Lone Tree. Um, what you're seeing is our recommended intersection type for Butler and Lone Tree, which is a traditional intersection. As Christine mentioned, we are very early on in the schematic design phase. So you are seeing the striping, you are not seeing the signals, but this is a signalized intersection. It's very similar to what you're seeing at Milton and Butler. Um, similar size, similar volumes, so what you see at Milton and Butler today is very similar to what you would see at Milton, or Butler and Lone Tree. Um, so a- as you picture this, try to picture that as a comparative intersection type. Some of the other intersections we did consider are roundabouts. We also considered a Michigan left, which is where you go through the intersection and then make a U-turn to, to make it sort of an indirect left. Um, we also looked at displaced lefts and restricted U-turns. Um, those were discarded due to, uh, poorer operations, plus it required more right-of-way than a traditional intersection. And what the business is, especially on this northeast corner that you're seeing here, um, just the right-of-way impacts, we discarded those, it's just unfavorable and unviable for this particular occasion. Yes, ma'am?
So if I'm seeing this correctly, um, is there a potential cyclist pedestrian conflict at each corner?
Um, so this currently, just to orient you, we got Butler going left to right, Lone Tree going north-south. This is a large enough staging area to where, and this isn't fully developed again, but we would stage the cyclists and the pedestrians separately. The cyclists would use the green marked crosswalks and the pedestrians would use the white marked crosswalks. So we're keeping our cyclists and our pedestrians separate, so that way there are no conflicts between user types. Um, what you can sort of see here to the right is Butler, because cyclists are on street on Butler. Um, they would actually come off the street, or they actually stay on the street going east-west and cross through the intersection as normal. Um, there is a proposal in one of the later slides where we could pull them off the street potentially and stage them. North-south, they would come up on the footstool or on the northbound, they would stage here and then cross on the, the green striped sidewalk and then continue on the footstool. So they're, they are crossing at the same time, nearby each other, but in separate crosswalks.
Councilmember McCarthy?
So, um, if a pedestrian made it halfway across, like he, in this picture, he could make it across four lanes, and then if the lights, you know, were getting ready to go red or something, he might just stay there in the middle. Is, would that, uh, median be wide enough that say a bicycle could, uh, you know, stay there and not have its, uh, front or back tire be hit by traffic? In other words, I guess I'm saying how wide is that? It's a good idea to have a place where they could stop halfway across, because that's a lot of lanes to get across.
So that is something we are still evaluating is our median width for being a refuge island. Um, so when I refer to a refuge island, it has to be a certain width to make sure they have enough room to feel safe staying there. Um, as we develop the intersection types further and we look at pedestrian timing, um, we can actually figure out based on some information we have if they're likely to cross in one phase or need multiple phases. Um, we'll continue to look at that as we approach final design.
I had a question regarding the positive offset. How does that affect snow plowing operations? Um, yeah, I'm just a little concerned with the, I understand the benefits of having that positive offset with visibility, but how's that gonna affect our snow plowing?
Yeah, so that's a conversation we're starting to have with the city. Um, we are starting to talk snow plow operations for all these options that you're gonna see tonight, and there's some other ones that you'll probably have the same question. And that's something we're starting to explore as we go from schematic design to final design. So I don't have a good answer yet. There are, uh, there are ways to stripe in the positive offsets versus a raised median. Uh, but again, that goes back to the refuge island. Do you feel safe in a stripe versus a raised median? Maybe, maybe not. So that's something we'll work through, um, with our city counterparts as we develop further concepts of how, how do these operations work together?
Excellent, okay. Yeah, and I will say that we, we definitely need a median in there, just a matter of, yeah, looking at this location and how it affects snow, so.
Um, so this is the eagle eye view, and now we're looking at it from the southeast corner. So if you're standing on this corner, this is sort of a pedestrian look, what you're looking at. So you'll see the north-south on the east side, again, no medians, we were recommending the double left. So you'll see that's a continuous crossing, crossing movement, and this does not have a refuge island as we're currently showing it. Again, this is not final, this is schematic. Um, you do see you have the refuge island on the west side of the northwest and on the east-west crossing. Um, that's what a pedestrian's viewpoint would be at this intersection. And again, no signals are shown, no poles are shown. We're not quite there yet in design and rendering yet.
Yeah, Councilmember Russell?
Mayor?
Pedestrian looks like he's scratching his head there. It looks very confusing and intimidating. Are, are we, are, have we considered off-grade pedestrian crossings at all?
Like a pedestrian overpass?
Overpass. Has that ever been part of the conversation?
Um, Christine, do you want to? Where's this one?
Thank you. Not really yet. We, we are in early design. I mean, if that's something that council wanted to look at, wanted us to look at, we could. There are right-of-way, um, needs for separation, there are budgetary needs for separation, but that's been part of the discussion.
This just doesn't look like a very pedestrian or bike-friendly intersection to me. I'm just sharing my thoughts out loud in real time.
And just to add some thoughts to that, just from what Christine said, so pedestrian crossings do have vertical clearance issues of you need 17.6 high, so you'll need to get landings up. So they do tend to have pretty long landing requirements. So if it's, it's something we're directed to look at, we're happy to look at it, but we haven't yet at this point.
I just spent the, the week in Washington DC as, uh, never once in a car. Um, and I never approached an intersection there and had such trepidation as I do for that poor guy with his hat standing there at the corner.
No. And then that, that's why, um, so one thing we want to present, so this is, uh, the same intersection with some of those enhancements that we pulled from the "Don't Give Up" on the intersections. So what you're seeing here is we're adding a, a refuge island, a large, we're, we're pulling the right turn lane, this is the southwest corner. We have a refuge island, this shortens the crossing, at least on one side of the intersection. We're pulling bicyclists off the road on the north side. Um, we can also look at pulling them off on the, the south side as well, but we're only showing it currently on the north side. Um, so this is one approach we can use to, to get that feeling, um, of trepidation out a little bit by shortening these crossings. Now we're into three crossings potentially, the distances are a lot shorter. So you have a lot more, a lot higher feeling of safety, because you're instead of crossing three, four lanes of traffic, you're now crossing just one and then two and then three, so it's broken up. Um, for this particular intersection, we are only showing it on the west side, because we do have an existing building on the northeast corner, so we're limited here a little bit. The northwest corner, we have potentially an opportunity to do the same thing, because we do have some properties that are potential takes. We haven't fully identified what's going on with both of these. There's two parcels right here, so we haven't fully touched that corner. And then the southeast corner, we're trying to minimize impacts to the existing landscaping at this time. But we did want to highlight, this is an example of the type of intersection enhancements we can do with a focus on multimodal users.
And, and to be fair, this does strike me as an improvement already.
Yep, for sure.
Um, Councilmember Shimoney has a question.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, so I, I also really appreciate the intention here with this, with this enhanced design. Um, it's, it definitely makes a little bit more sense. Um, but when I zoom in, am I correct in counting seven lanes of traffic at some of these, uh, directions?
Your max lanes of traffics would be on this eastern leg, which has two throughs eastbound, two left turn lanes westbound, two through lanes westbound and a dedicated right, I believe, westbound. So that would be your seven, correct, on the eastern leg?
And then looking to, looking to the right where that right-hand turn goes, I also count seven there as well, going, uh, towards the upper part of the, I think that's the northern end, heading north. It looks like there's seven as well?
One, two, three, four, five, six. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven on the north side, yes.
So I just want to make it clear, we're not saying three and four lanes, you know, council, we're talking about six, seven lanes. And, and I don't even know if we have any seven-lane intersections in the city. We might. Do, do we? Do we know? Pretty sure fourth is the other biggest, and that's six lanes, I want to say, in each direction. Um, anyways, we can talk more about this later, I just was a little bit shocked to see seven lanes. Thank you.
If you wanted to speak to, yeah, that.
Okay, thanks. Jeff Bowman, City Traffic Engineer, you, you got there in your mind, fourth and 66 is seven lanes on all legs.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Um, okay, sounds good, thank you.
And then here's a view of the same one. Can't quite see that median island. Um, we will get a new rendering, probably standing from the other corner, hopefully soon, so we'll, we'll get that added likely to the website, so you can see what it looks like standing over there. Um, so for Route 66 and Lone Tree, we actually have two viable intersections we identified. Um, this is a conventional intersection, so same, uh, when I say conventional, it's just a signalized T-intersection. Then we have what's called a Florida T. We did also have some non-viable intersections. We did consider a roundabout at this location. Um, based on the volume of traffic, we are borderline before a roundabout breaks down. And because it was a borderline functionality just due to the volumes, and because it took so much additional property, it was discarded in, in discussions with ADOT, is non-viable, so that's why you're not seeing that here. Um, but that did leave us with two, the Florida T and the conventional intersection. Um, the conventional intersection will behave as, as like a similar intersection. Come in northbound, you have a double left and a double right recommended. You got two through, through eastbound with a dedicated right. Again, we would recommend this be a signalized right, not a continuous right, just to help facilitate pedestrian and bicyclist safety that are using this crossing. And you have, uh, two through bound, through left, westbound lanes and a double left to southbound movement. That's, that's our, based on the volumes, that's our recommended layout. We also have a Florida T. The way this behaves differently than a conventional intersection is the westbound through movements don't stop. They will, they would run continuous, and your northbound left turn movements would then turn into a, a merge lane. So in, in, there's a median that separates the westbound through movements with the left turn northbound to westbound movement, and they eventually merge further to the west of this intersection. Um, operationally, this behaves slightly better than a conventional intersection. Um, westbound would only stop when there's a pedestrian that activates a crossing signal at this location. Um, this was presented to ADOT as part of the traffic impact analysis. Um, however, based on the different scoring data, it's not just on level of service, it's also about usability, about familiarity, um, about potential conflict resolution. The conventional intersection was rated with a higher score overall after the intersection analysis and was presented as the recommended intersection type. We just got our comments back last week from ADOT and they agreed with that recommendation for the conventional intersection over the Florida T. But these were both presented. The main concerns with the Florida T were, uh, driver familiarity with the Florida T would be the first intersection of its kind in Flagstaff. Um, also because westbound traffic only stops when it's activated by a pedestrian, it's infrequent, it's not gonna be on a normal cycle, and it can lead to some rear-end collisions just due to the infrequency of when it might be triggered. You'll also potentially lose, well, you do lose the, uh, dealt, the both the westbound, or east and west crossings. You can't have an east-side crossing at this intersection, just because it doesn't work with the, uh, the double movements or the continuous movement. Um, so for, because of this, we are recommending the conventional intersection, but did want to present both intersection types to you this evening. Um, we did develop schematic designs for both intersections, so you can get a better idea of how it looks from a user's perspective. So this is an eagle eye of the Florida T. Um, this does not have any of the pedestrian enhancements we were showing, but all the concepts we showed previously at Butler, similar concepts can be applied here. Um, so what you're seeing here is Route 66 is being shown up and down in this figure, and then you got Lone Tree coming in from the right. You got your westbound movement continuous, and you can imagine your Lone Tree left turn lane coming into this merge lane headed off the bottom of your picture. Pedestrians would cross, you got several refuge islands, but you are crossing at this point six lanes through several narrow medians. Uh, going back to your refuge island question, the widths of these medians would have to be evaluated during the final design to make sure pedestrian timing and the widths of the refuge islands are appropriate for users. Um, right turn lanes would be, and then the right turn lanes, left, northbound lefts and westbound lefts would all be signalized. So you're again not seeing the signalization. But everything on the right side of your screen is a signalized intersection, only the westbound would not be signalized except for the pedestrian activated.
Councilmember McCarthy?
So a northbound person, there's two left, if you're going north and, and want to turn west, there's two lanes, right?
Correct.
So that merge-in lane would have to be a double lane too?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry, on the Florida T, um, we only had a single left turn lane. Yeah, sorry, that's another difference. Um, because of the way this operates, and, and Joe, if you're still on the line, can you explain why we only had a single left recommended for the Florida T?
Yeah, still on the line. Uh, a single left is just because it's more efficient with the signal timing there, you can move, uh, the cars through, uh, there'd be more green time on that movement to allow a single lane to work.
Okay. Yeah, because you don't, you don't have to accommodate the westbound. Yeah, because you don't, you don't have to accommodate the westbound timing in your signal phasing. You get a longer left turn timing.
Right, but that's not the preferred intersection type at this point.
Correct, yep. Here's an eagle eye perspective if you were standing on this corner, the southwest corner. So you're seeing that west side crossing here. You're seeing the right intercept, the right turn lane here, the narrow refuge islands at this point, and then the east-west crossing here. So that's, that's the direction you're seeing. If we go to the traditional intersection, you are seeing some minor enhancements. You are seeing this refuge island here separating the right turn lane from the through movements. This is minor enhancements. I'll see in the bike lane with the colored sidewalk, just for high visibility for them. But again, you're not seeing a signalization, but this would behave very similar to the Butler and Lone Tree intersection with the exception that it's only, it's a T-intersection. But you've got your Route sixty-six going top to bottom, you've got your Lone Tree coming in from the right. We are showing crosswalks on both sides of the intersection. ADOT has made a comment that they may not have a preference for, or they may not want crosswalks on both sides. That is an issue, just a date that we have to work through with ADOT if they'll allow crosswalks on both sides of this intersection. And then here's from the same visibility standpoint, the biggest difference is you can see you have a bigger refuge island with this concept just because you're not trying to squeeze in that extra merge lane. So you get a little bit bigger refuge island coming off this right turn lane. So one other thing we did look at in conjunction with the travel demand model was the impact to greenhouse gases. We did look at the impacts on opening year and then projected out to year 2040. So I'll try to walk you through the table. So the first column here is a summation of the total savings. If you're, if you're seeing a number not in parentheses, it's a savings between the years 2026 and 2040. So with the addition of Lone Tree Road, our economist is predicting a savings of almost 1.9 million gallons of fuel or 17,000 tons of greenhouse gas emissions. What these projections are based on, there are several factors that go into these projections. The main thing is, as we discussed previously, currently there's only one grade separated crossing with BNSF. This is providing a second grade separated crossing. The other grade separated crossings are all at grade and have to stop. So one of the big factors is, once we get a second grade separation, we lose all that idling time whenever a train comes by. So that's one big factor. Another big factor is as we add this arterial roadway to the network, speeds tend to improve. Cars operate their most efficiently between 30 and 45, 50 miles per hour. So as vehicular speeds generally improve with less congestion through the roadway network, you get improved performance and you get a reduction in greenhouse gases. Another component that was incorporated into this model is just overall vehicular emissions improvements. So that's not directly attributable to this project. That would have been seen regardless of the project, but it was brought into these numbers. So those are the three main components that you're seeing. So the opening year, so just to give you an comparison and to show where these numbers are coming from, just based on the improvements of having the second grade separation and having improved efficiency of the speed of through the network, we are predicting an improvement of about 290,000 gallons of fuel a year. This does tend to fall off by 2040 to where we lose all the gains by 2040. And this is just as the projected volume of traffic goes up. Our models were based on the Milton Corridor study that did have annual growth. We did not hold a zero growth model for traffic volumes. As the corridor, as the, as the traffic volume goes up, congestion goes up and our speed savings tend to go down, we start to lose our savings year over year. So that's what you're seeing in this 2040 annual. So by 2040, we tend to lose any gains we got by 2026, but over this 14-year period, substantial savings. The average savings per year is 126,000 gallons of fuel or 1,100. We did also look at a scenario at the request of the city. What if we reduced Lone Tree from four lanes to two lanes? So we ran our model with that reduction. We don't get as much of a redistribution of traffic through the network because not as many users can go over to Lone Tree to use it. So we don't get as big of a savings of speed improvements and reduction in congestion at the opening year. So what you're seeing is our savings at the opening year go from 285,000 to 122,000. But by 2040, you, we actually had an increase of, we still had some improvements 2040. Overall, we still had a less overall gallons reduced on the horizon year to 2040. And we did show by 2047, just by the trend data, this would also become negative and you'd lose all gains from the two-year scenario. And even at 2047, you're still not having as much savings as you do with the four lane scenario. So I know that's a lot of data, so I'll sort of sit there and see if you guys have questions.
Yeah, I had a question on this. Does this include the amount of greenhouse gas emissions in the actual construction?
No, this is just.
So the, yeah, that's what I figured. It doesn't include all the concrete, that how much gas that, or greenhouse gas emissions from making concrete, building the actual structure.
Yeah, Sophie, are you on the line? I just want to confirm that.
I am, that's correct.
Yes, construction was not included.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Vice Mayor? Oh, yes, Councilmember Shimoney, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, quick question on this. I really do struggle with this slide for a number of reasons. I do appreciate the intent of talking about the data here in regards to greenhouse gases and, and our, you know, carbon neutrality plans. But our carbon neutrality plan states that we will hold vehicle miles traveled steady at 2019 levels, even amidst community growth. And so I guess my question is, at some point in the conversation tonight on the presentation, can we get Nicole or someone from Sustainability to speak to the conflicting, I think, messaging that I'm hearing regarding 2040 projected numbers and the goals of the climate neutrality plan? I think this slide would be appropriate, but I'll let you determine that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Maybe we'll save that for the end. Let's get through the presentation and then we can add on the additional questions, so. Thank you.
All right, I'll turn it back over to Christine, who'll walk through the project aesthetics portion.
So as we are getting to the end of the preliminary design, our base design, we are starting to look at project aesthetics for the bridge and for the landscaping, beautification elements. So there are some areas of opportunity on the bridge. One of them is railing treatments. This top slide here is just coming off the bridge going south where you still have railing on the right-hand side over the BNSF corridor. This area here to the right is the footstool that goes underneath the bridge. Again, we have opportunity for railing treatments. And this bottom left is an example that our, we, Design Group, our design subconsultants, provided for a project down south. And so this is something that, again, we could integrate, you know, into the bridge as, you know, the mayor, council, the community kind of weighs in on these aesthetic items. The other area we have are gateway treatments. And, you know, again, it kind of, the bridge at Butler and Route sixty-six kind of sets us up nicely for a great gateway treatment. Maybe there's something as you're going into the south side about the community, but, you know, something that's a tower or obelisk or, you know, any of these ideas. Again, we're kind of in the preliminary stages on this. This will be presented to the public and to council by our design consultants and beautification staff and with the guidance from BPAC, Beautification and Public Arts Commission. And there's also opportunity for wall treatments on the sides of the bridges, whether that be a pattern or a rendering or aesthetic. And we also have, with the Lone Tree project, we are considering the future civic space for the south side community. There's an area underneath the, the bridge at the Eldon Corridor that, that might be, you know, a good area to target for, for some improvements for aesthetics. And again, there's this detention area here that could be kind of expanded into a park in the area, but also provide a canvas on the back wall for some aesthetic treatment. I did grab two slides out of the south side community plan. It kind of shows, shows the same area. One of the things that we are doing with this project is we're eliminating these fill slopes on the north and the south side of the bridge, and those are becoming retaining walls. So it's just to recapture as much property as we can in order to dedicate that to future civic space, like once that is programmed and funded. And this is the exhibit that shows the basketball court with the Eldon Loop. The basketball courts wouldn't necessarily fit fully underneath the bridge, but, you know, our goal is to maintain the intent of the south side, south side community plan and provide those improvements, you know, in this general area. So for our path forward, again, we've done a lot of preliminary design, early data collection. Since February, we've had public meetings and outreach. We're going to be stepping into, hopefully be back here in November with a full design contract and taking your ideas and integrating those and keep going until December of 2022. And then hopefully in 2023, we'd be ready for project construction. We also have a project website, lonetreeoverpass.org. And this just kind of shows you the first screen where you have tabs to learn about the project, learn about the public involvement. We've got a virtual public meeting room. This is very similar to the one that was done for the Rio de Flag that has exhibit boards, documents posted there. We've got frequently asked questions and documents and then contact information. We do have an online survey, it's through Survey Monkey, in English and in Spanish, for the community to go in and fill out and provide us feedback. And my information is on the bottom of this slide with my, my web address or my email address and my phone number. And that concludes our presentation for tonight.
Excellent, thank you. Council, any questions at this time? We do have some public participation as well, so we can do that first. But if you have any direct questions as opposed to discussion items, we can add that in now. Yeah, we're, we can entertain the questions for sustainability if you'd like, Councilmember Shimoney, this time.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think this would be an appropriate time for that. Okay, so I said we have Jenny Niemann from our sustainability. So Jenny, I guess my question is, in regards to sustainability, through the lens of sustainability, when looking at this bridge and thinking about it through our climate neutrality plans, I guess, where does it overlap with the, with the document and the data that we're looking at here? Does this overlap with the, with the plan we need a stake to? I just know that our carbon neutrality plan speaks to 2019 data in terms of vehicles miles traveled and it looks like we're going quite a bit above and beyond that here. So just wanted to give you an opportunity to just kind of share some thoughts in regards to this project at large and if we're looking at the right things when it comes to sustainability and measuring the progress and efficiency of what we're trying to do when it comes to carbon neutrality. Hopefully that makes sense, thank you.
Sure, Mayor and Councilmember Shimoney. Jenny Niemann, Climate Program Manager in the Sustainability Office. Thank you for the question. I will attempt to answer a couple parts of it. It was a bit broad, but, so first of all, you know, this is a really important step in the slide here. We haven't really done this necessarily for transportation projects before. And so I'll say that we're really excited. Christine has been really fantastic about bringing us into this project and helping us look at this. We've talked to the consulting team, Jason, thanks to you and Sophie, you know, to think through this. So I wanted to say first, this is a really big step for us. It's incredibly important that we understand the emissions of all of our actions across the city, right? Particularly when they relate to transportation. You asked about sort of how this relates to the carbon neutrality plan. This is mainly in the decreased dependence on cars section, right? So that really covers transportation and land use because they are so connected together. This is obviously more connected on the transportation side as it's transportation infrastructure. And, but the point of that section is really, how can we decrease dependence on cars for everybody in our community, right? And that is really about increasing options, right? When we can depend less on cars, it opens up a lot of different opportunities for everybody. So an important part of that is bike and pedestrian infrastructure. You obviously have heard a lot about that tonight. There's been a lot of consideration into bike and pedestrian infrastructure in this project and how we get through these intersections, how we get people through this entire corridor. So that's one big part of it. Another part of it is car traffic, right, or car travel. And how do we think about car travel? How do we, what trade-offs do we have? And, and that I think is, I think perhaps the, the next part of your question, Councilmember Shimoney, we know that there are trade-offs, we know that there are tensions. I think it's really important that we kind of all step back, right? When we adopted the carbon neutrality plan, we said sort of, this is just the first step. There are going to be conversations about trade-offs. There are tensions, of course, right, between thinking about transportation movement throughout our town by all of these different modes. And so I think that this sort of project, right, brings all of that to the head, right? We were thinking about all of these different modes. How do we balance them? What are the trade-offs? What are we putting different efforts into, et cetera? So, yeah, I think that this is, you know, certainly emblematic of that and, and, you know, a conversation we certainly expect and welcome. And we have been really happy to be included in by Christine and her team. So let me know, Councilmember Shimoney, if there's anything that I didn't get into.
I think that's good for now. I appreciate that insight and I do appreciate the collaboration and intent here. I think we're getting there, but I still think we have work to do. But I'll leave my comments to later, Mayor and Council. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other questions at this time? All right, well, with that, we can turn it over to public participation and then we will turn it back for discussion. To start out with, David Hayward.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Good to see all of you. I am here under two pretenses. One is we own one piece of property on that intersection, the northeast corner of Lone Tree and Butler. Very much in favor of this project. We've all seen what the Fourth Street Bridge has done for traffic and revitalization in our town and, you know, I'm really hoping that this will do the same. Second is, as a member of the Stakeholder Committee that helped write the south side plan, one of the most important parts of that was providing a park for the south side. That is something that has been overlooked for too many years and this provides the opportunity to do that. So I really hope that we can make sure that happens through this process. My second comment is, I sat through that presentation and had sort of cartoon dollar signs running in front of my eyes. You know, we did pay for this with a bond measure. That bond measure had a dollar figure on it. I, it would be the worst possible scenario if we got through this whole thing, you know, get to our guaranteed maximum price two years from now and we have a overpass that we can't afford to build because we've added so many bells and whistles to it. So it worries me a little bit that there were no dollar figures in that presentation at all. There was no discussion of the budget. We have a budget and we do need to meet it and we, so we can make sure that this thing happens, right? So it doesn't stall out because we don't have enough money. So it doesn't stall out because we don't have enough money. As a corollary to that, and slightly more detail, I will say that, you know, as a person at that corner, I do not believe the Eldon Street extension is necessary and that we need that access. But that's a level of detail that I think staff can work out on their own. That whole area, our parcel and all our neighbors is going to change. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hayward. Julie Leed.
Good evening, Mayor Deasy, members of council. Good to see you be here in person. My name is Julie Leed. I chair the Transportation Commission. I'm going to try to summarize a two-hour-long meeting from the beginning of August in less than three minutes. So the purpose of that meeting, August 11th, was to review the conceptual design of the Lonetree Overpass project. So attendees included the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committees and Sustainability Commission. We also had Ms. Deb Harris from the South Side Community Association and Councilmembers Aslan and McCarthy, and city staff from Capital, Engineering, Traffic, Sustainability, and the LTO Design Team. So the meeting objective was to provide information and seek input to the categories and criteria for those intersection options. So the design team presented multiple intersection design options and an evaluation matrix. We talked about safety, operations, right of way, and cost, just to list a few. We were not asked to select an intersection layout, but to provide input on the weighting and the criteria. So here are some general design comments that we heard at that commission meeting. From Sustainability Commission, there was a question about traffic modeling and carbon neutrality goals and how traffic modeling will be based on typical projections with growth, but options for a spread of scenarios. There needs to be sensitivity of goals and policies with the TIA. And I am reading because I wanted to capture verbatim the, the information that I heard. From Ms. Deb Harris, we heard South Side has an award-winning neighborhood plan, and it is critical to use that model to engage the community. The neighborhood lacks open space and parks. We need to give back to the neighborhood in exchange for putting a roadway through a formerly segregated community. Others expressed that same sentiment about need, need for a community park. There's also a comment regarding project aesthetics and architecture and an opportunity to make an amenity and a landmark feature with this project. It's important to be able to describe these impacts to downtown or as a result of the project and to the public. So what does this mean as a driver, as a cyclist, as a pedestrian? We need to look at bike and pet operations at the project limits, so at our termination points as part of the selection criteria. And we need to maintain access for adjacent properties. So we had a couple of specific design comments. Wanted to note that pedestrians and cyclists have different needs. We, we commonly say bike, pet, bike, pet, but we need to say cyclists and pedestrians. And we need to provide equal consideration for those individuals with sight and mobility impairments. The Florida T, as you saw, appears to prioritize turning movements for vehicles at the expense and delay of pedestrians, which was not desired. The new intersection design may be unfamiliar to people and need to balance safety with driver unfamiliarity in that criteria weighting and selection. There was great enthusiasm for advanced signalization for cyclists and pedestrians. A big issue is that free flow right turn and the desire for a signal control for that right on red to improve safety.
Thank you, Ms. Leed. Could you tell us a little bit more about that meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Deasy. I would be happy to. I was trying to speak quickly. Appreciate it. There was much discussion on importance of snow removal and maintenance. As we have a grade separated space for cyclists and pedestrians, there needs to be a way to be able to remove the snow and maintain that. Otherwise, all of that work that we do for infrastructure isn't functioning as we intended. There was a discussion on budget and feasibility of selecting an option, and there's a recognition that budget can drive that selection in all of these things that we talked about. Our commission meetings are recorded, and that recording can be made available to you. It's also a good opportunity for me to put a plug in that we're always eager to, to receive applications for the, the committees and those commissions for those who are very passionate about transportation, things like this in our community. So thank you for allowing me the time to finish.
Thank you, Ms. Leed. Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Ms. Leed, for, for being here today and tried to successfully present what the, the discussion, the discussion with the Transportation Commission in the last few months. What, what is the overall recommendation of the Transportation Commission regarding this, this schematic design thus far?
Councilmember Solis, we were asked to really focus on the selection criteria and the weighting to inform that process, but we were not asked to necessarily recommend an intersection layout. At the time it was presented to us in August, some of those details hadn't been worked out that you see here this evening. There was, I should add, there was a lot of concern about a roundabout. There was not enthusiasm for pursuing a roundabout at either a location. And then there was the concern about the Florida T.
Could you expand on the, on the? Could, sorry, could you expand on the, about, could you expand on the concern about Florida T intersection?
Certainly, Councilmember Solis. The, the concern, let's see, is that it would prioritize turning movements for vehicles at the expense and delay of pedestrians on that Florida T movement. That was the primary concern that, that I heard.
Is there any, is there anything else you would like to share to Counsel as pertaining to the presentation that was just presented to us today?
Councilmember Solis, I think it's exciting to see the progression since August. And I think as a commission, we're excited to see that come back to the commission so we can have a lively discussion with all of the commissioners so that they can each weigh in on their thoughts and reactions to the information that you saw this evening. So I want to be careful not to speak on behalf of the commission on that matter, but I can say there's enthusiasm for seeing it again, and I look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do appreciate and send you my grateful heart for, for your, for your leadership on Transportation Commission along with the fellow commissioners on the commission. Thank you for your time and your service to the community.
Thank you. I'll pass that along.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, and then Councilmember Shimoney has a question for you as well.
I thank Ms. Leed for coming. You know, based on the conversation tonight, it's, I'm get, I feel strongly that the Refuge Islands have a lot of value. Can you refresh my memory? Did the Transportation Commission talk about that? Does that make sense to you? Comments on the Refuge Islands?
Councilmember McCarthy, yes, we did look at it. When it was presented to us, there were, there were many more options. There was a lot of detail for each intersection design. We got a little, frankly, we got a little bogged down in the detail at commission, and it was kind of difficult to unbury ourselves from that. But as I recall, the conversation specific to the pedestrian refuge was in the context of those right turn lanes. And as we're looking at Butler and Lonetree specifically, it was the, the free flow right and having signalization that you could activate so that you would have a, a right turn control and you wouldn't have that free flow right. So that would require an island for that signalization. So that's what I recall from the meeting specific to pedestrian refuges.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Leed, for your leadership and worked on this as well. Glad, glad that you're coming forward and providing a public comment and this opportunity to, to ask questions with you. Can you speak to the commission and the committees' concerns that were raised in regards to pedestrian well-being, and again, specifically in regards to the number of lanes at the intersections? Was, was that a topic of concern? And what did committee members and commissioners have to say about that, that you remember?
Councilmember Shimoney, I do not remember specific details related to the number of lanes and pedestrians, that we had a, a specific discussion about that. But I think to, to that response or to that comment, question, that could certainly be a, a topic of conversation should this be brought back to the, the Transportation Commission.
Okay, thank you. And, yeah, I definitely think it should come back through the commissions and committees, and I would definitely be interested in their input on that topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And thank you, Ms. Leed.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember.
We have Deb Harris, and then we will take the online participants.
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. It was really good. I understood what I was looking at, and that's kind of scary. But anyway, I just wanted to bring up a couple of points regarding the project. First of all, definitely, we want to talk about the public space, and we, and I want to reiterate that it's crucially important that we remember that because that was something that we had put in our plan and something that the city promised. And so whoever, I mean, where were we going to get the money from to do it? We'll figure that out. But the other thing that I also wanted to talk about is that I wanted to also focus on public transportation. So we're so concerned about the carbon emissions and all of that, but the, the part of the conversation that I really haven't heard is how do we get people out of cars? And we get people out of cars so that we don't have these issues by increasing our public transportation. So I lived in a large city for a long time with a kid, and I didn't have a car. And I got around great, grocery shopping and everything because we had great public transportation. My son lives in downtown LA. He does not have a car, and he's a videographer, and he gets around great because the public transportation is so good. So if we can stop thinking so much about putting everybody on bikes because at my age, I'm not getting on a bike, so we could not have that discussion. But we need to talk about public transportation, and that's going to at least, I think, address of some of the problems, especially the problems with how many lanes of traffic we have, if we can get people out of cars and get them into public transportation or on public transportation. That would be great. And so the last thing that I just want to say is that we need to also focus on getting this more out to the community because I think people know that we're going to do this, but they really haven't heard a lot about what's happening. And I've had questions about that, so we really need to try and make that clear to people, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. All right, with that, online, we have Anthony Quinto.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I think this question's been answered, but I do have the question. The, the presentations from this evening will be online because I, there's a lot to digest in these, and I'd like to provide, I think, a little bit more succinct comments, but I will give a few more from an overview perspective right now. I, I would like to see a bicycle and pedestrian prioritized alternative for this plan, whether it's, that would be the final one that's implemented or not. I would like to see the designers focus on prioritizing those things. So that's one thing I think that I'd like to draw attention to. Most of these proposals aren't prioritizing bikes and pedestrians at all. And frankly, a lot of this, I'm sure, object, that's not really bike infrastructure or pedestrian infrastructure, just looks like that. It facilitates maybe some things, but it doesn't facilitate, for example, cyclists who are comfortable in traffic moving efficiently. Some of these design aspects actually require bikes to wait for several, several intersection cycles, several light cycles to make, say, for example, a left-hand turn. While at the same time, we're having conversations about whether we're going to add an extra 30 seconds to the ability for a car to make a turn, if I was understanding part of the turn lane questions from earlier. I, I admonish the council to spend time truly visualizing using these intersections as either riders or pedestrians. Really think through, what would it look like to get from this corner to that corner? How long would that take? I think that's where a lot of this stuff breaks down, is in these nice presentations, and the presentation is very well done. But these things look really great. They look super cool. But when you actually put your mind around, how would I navigate this intersection on foot or on a bicycle? They're not really that great. They're real slow and really time-consuming and don't prioritize getting people around on, under their own power. And then the last point, and I made this point in a letter to the council, but the greenhouse gas analysis needs to also incorporate induced demand into these projections. And I, I don't know how you do that science, but I know that science that, that exists. So by providing these additional lanes of traffic, there is another consideration. You will get, you will facilitate more use of motor vehicles, and that's not being incorporated into those GHG numbers. And that's potentially substantial. It's an old bit of science, it's science on this, and, and the engineering goes back to the 1930s. So I think that's an important consideration as well. Thanks for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Quinto. Do we have any other online participants?
No, Mayor, we do not.
All right, well, with that, we can turn it back on Counsel for discussion. Would you like to take a little break? We can do it afterward or right now? Yeah, you did. Well, yeah, let's, let's take a few minutes right now. We can digest this a little bit for discussion since it was a lot of information, and then we'll be back here. Let's take 14 minutes, so it'd be 6:05. We can revisit this. Thank you. All right, are we ready to go here? All set? Excellent. Well, with that, Counsel, we have, yeah, I'd like to hear your thoughts on the Lonetree Overpass. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I do have a couple of questions for staff. I have three things. First of all, I think, especially considering how many lanes people have to go across, I think if we can work in some refuge islands, I think that would be very positive. The second thing is, and here's a question for staff, how are we on budget? I didn't mean, I don't want details, but I mean, are, we're going to be okay on budget?
Councilmember McCarthy, we're, we're kind of in the discovery stage of everyone's wish list at the point, at this point with the project. You know, we, we hear loud and clear the community wants, you know, the best kind of pedestrian and cyclist facilities that, that we can afford. We, our contractor is working up the draft guaranteed maximum price at the moment, but this is a large part, this conversation is part of those numbers. And so we, we are, you know, we do have $73 million, and, and again, it's going to be a trade off once we kind of get all the ideas on the table, so.
All right, so it sounds like you'll come back to us on that. I mean, if we're going to do it, we need to do it right, but there's the reality of the budget.
Right, and the real estate is really, I mean, everyone knows what real estate is doing in Flagstaff. That's been the biggest unanticipated cost.
Right. My last question is, if you run this by Mountain Line? This is, I'm kind of tying into Mrs. Harris, Ms. Harris's comment.
Yes.
So you have coordinated with Mountain Line?
We are, and we have. We have the draft design report that was put out week before last, and they have provided comments on that back to us, but yes, they are one of our stakeholders and completely coordinating, so.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree, it was a great presentation and a, a lot to digest. I think I'll go back and watch it again. Looking at the intersections, I, you know, I picture myself as someone who has any kind of a mobility issue, whether it's sight or age, or you have a stroller, and the, the intersections look very daunting. And so that's my major concern. And if we are going to achieve our carbon goals, and if we are going to design for a more enjoyable place to live, it has to be enjoyable to walk and bike. And we need to remember that every trip ends with walking. And so even if you're taking transit, if you're, if Mountain Line lets you out... you're, if Mountain Line lets you out, but then you've got this horrendous intersection to go through, that just, anything that we put in the, in the path of someone choosing another option in terms of transportation, I think we're missing an opportunity to create what we've said that we, that we value, and, and we're losing that opportunity to meet our goals as well. So, so I'd like to see real focus on the intersections and how we make sure that everyone, regardless of ability, is able to get safely, and, and not just safely, but enjoy, as enjoyable as an intersection can be.
Thank you.
You, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Aslan.
Okay. I've got several thoughts here. I've written some of them down. This is our chance to really give you guys some early feedback, and really appreciate the opportunity to do that. And really excited about the opportunities that are before us. I think about this very much in the context of our carbon neutrality plan, and some things I've said in the past about reimagining the way traffic is going to work down the road, pun intended, which we can't entirely know, but we, we've got some good thoughts on that. And I just want to encourage us overall to, to be bold and to think in new ways, and to use new, new ways of thinking to create new ideas here. You know, it, it's important to, to state right off the offset that the voters have spoken. This is a project that will proceed, and I support moving forward with the Lone Tree Overpass. I honestly, honestly don't remember whether I voted yes or no on that ballot measure. But I really do see the need for new pathways throughout Flagstaff. I want to be mindful, too, though, that we can't road build our way out of congestion. I firmly believe that. That's, that's a philosophy that I carried with me into this role, and it's one that I've heard a lot over the past several weeks. I've hinted at some of the conversations that are going back and forth in the community with respect to the John Wesley Powell Boulevard and this project. There's a lot of apprehension and anxiety about the way that we grow and the mindfulness with which we do it, right? But at the same chance, I'm really excited about this opportunity. I, I see a way for us to move forward with the project that proclaims our community values and provides needed relief for traffic at the same time. And I know we have a very intelligent, very smart, very innovative group of engineers and thinkers on this who could, who could weave that needle, right? You know, the, in the same way, when we talk about climate, that the past is no longer an adequate predictor of the future, I think it's important to keep that philosophy in mind when it comes to the way that we crunch numbers and project out congestion levels and car traffic and, and vehicle behaviors in the decades ahead. And, and my challenge to all of us, and my, 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 my vision casting is that we, we do this in a way where we dictate traffic patterns and future behaviors, and we don't let our current behaviors dictate us. All that said, I have to share with you that I'm very concerned with what I've generally seen tonight. And that's not to disparage all of the hard work that's gone into this so far. We're at a great starting point. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to hit pause and have these important conversations and to voice, give voice to the community concerns that are associated with this project. I, I feel that it's too big. I feel that it's too focused on cars. I feel that it's too much a function of the beast and not enough of taking the bull by the horns. So I just want to encourage our planners to go smaller on this. I think we, I think we need less lanes. I think we shouldn't worry about intersection wait times, to an extent, right? I mean, don't sweat the small stuff. 30-second trade-offs are not something that we need to be broadening our scope over. And I've heard this said before from others, some of our public speakers as well. Think more from the perspective of people on bikes or on foot, or down the road perhaps, on electric scooters, who are going to be moving about town the way I saw everybody doing in DC last week. There's, there's new ways that people are going to be using our multimodal system, and we have an opportunity to be in charge of what that looks like down the road, instead of just appeasing a past notion of the way things have always been. I want to say, to the extent that we're able, we need to go all in aesthetically. This should be a county-wide amenity. It should be something that can appear on postcards, something that speaks to our community values. It needs to have, it needs to be bold with our community space, civic space. So to the extent that we can be very, very enthusiastic about design elements and wall treatments and railing treatments and all, all those aspects of things, we should do that. Absolutely. And I just, I, I want to take a minute to talk about the greenhouse analysis. I'm very grateful that that was done. It's great to see that. I'm fairly skeptical still that we're, to put too much into that. I think it's an important part of the conversation, but what I really took away from that is that 14 years from now, we're going to be back at the same levels of congestion, which is exactly what I think folks who are anxious about this are most concerned about, that we're just facilitating more traffic by building more lanes and not actually solving the problem that we're here to address. So be bold, think in new ways, be innovative, use new ways of, of analysis and data collection and, and crunching the numbers. And let's continue the process and be very transparent about it. I think we can all get what we want out of this. And at the end of the day, it's, it's a very, very exciting moment for us. Thank you, staff, so much for all the work. And I really do respect you guys and have great faith that you'll move forward with council direction in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Shimonie or Councilmember Sweet, online? Did you want to chime in at all?
Yes, I think Councilmember Sweet was first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And I just wrote down a few notes. I'm going to go through them one by one. I do definitely believe we need the stop-controlled right-turn lanes, the separated bike lanes, the positive offset intersection, larger refuge islands. I do agree with what has been said, that those intersections look awfully daunting to me as well. I agree that if we can reduce the lanes, I would, I would appreciate that. I'm sure our multimodal community would as well. I look forward to learning more about the snow removal and the maintenance. I think that's an important aspect, so that we can enjoy all the different modes of transportation throughout the year. The beautification element, definitely keep that in mind, so that it reflects our city. And thank you for creating the website. I believe that's a very useful tool, and I will help promote that on my social media, and hope that council can do that as well. And I really appreciate that we included Talk of a Park in the Southside community. And again, just thank you. I do believe we have a good starting point, but, you know, a lot of work to be done, and to think outside the box and, and have new vision with it. So thank you again. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Christine and Jason and everyone that's been working on this. I know this has been a long time coming, and you all have been working really hard to, to bring forward the best project that we can for the city and the community. And I just want to, you know, appreciate you and everyone that's worked on it. I think you all have done a good job. By the way, I'm at the Phoenix Airport, so I'm just going to talk through the announcements. I apologize for the background noise. But a couple questions and a couple comments. I saw slides where bike lanes were basically either between traffic or adjacent to traffic, separated by a strip of paint. I think we need to find designs that allow folks the option to either, you know, ride that way, which some of us are willing to, or, or to ride in that, you know, that 60% of the population who's, I think is concerned but interested. So, so I think we're doing a good job accommodating that population that doesn't want to be on, on the road for the most part, but there were some slides that didn't do that. So I implore us to continue down that path. We also talked about reducing traffic from San Francisco and Beaver. If that is the case, we should also be talking about alternatives of taking a lane or whatever that looks like, sooner than later, before those volumes increase to the point where we say, okay, know what? Let's just leave the lanes as is, because there's already traffic on here. Let's go ahead and continue down that mode shift discussion while we have the opportunity. Are we, so I'm going to enter, make some questions in here to Christine. Are we doing a NEPA on this project?
Councilmember Shimonie, we are not doing an official NEPA. We are doing environmental assessments of the parcels that, that we're purchasing. We're doing environmental assessments of the buildings and the land, and we are following kind of the NEPA process with our public involvement, which is kind of more strenuous. So, but we're not doing a full NEPA, no.
Okay. I'd be interested to learn more about the, you know, impacts on, on the adjacent communities and the different design options and how they rate, you know? But we can circle back to that. You know, as Councilmember Aslan spoke to, I have the same concerns that by 2040, we're going to find ourselves back at the same issue, with the same issue, but yet with seven-lane intersections, and we're thinking, where do we go from here? So I do have concerns about some of the underlying principles and values of which this project was designed. When we talk about the values and the trade-offs, I think we should talk about that median width, that 26 and 29-foot median at times, and the cost versus time savings. And, you know, I think council needs to have, and the community has, needs to have the ability to pick and choose which value is prioritized. Do we really prioritize that double left-hand turn for the additional 26 feet of median? And, and what's that cost? How many millions of dollars is that? You know, I think we need to, like Councilmember McCarthy said, start diving into some of these numbers when, when possible or appropriate to better digest and understand what the trade-offs are. I think we need a, a discussion around values and trade-offs in general, you know? I think that that would be helpful. I'd like for us to address lane widths. There's 12 and 11-feet lane widths at times, and I think we can bring that down maybe to 10 and a half is what I think is possible. But I think that the tighter we make that, the better to slow down traffic. I'd like for us to find a way to fund that park, the parks that we're looking to build with this, the funding from this project. I have a feeling there's a way to do both. And then, let's see, almost through my li, my list. Yeah, I've, you know, major concerns about the intersections and, and how we're prioritizing the movement of traffic, like the public commenter spoke to. Can we see designs for how a bicycle prioritized model might look for a overpass on these, these projects in general, and same with pedestrian? And then at least that way, we can see the different ways to design that best suit each mode of trans, travel, and overlay how we want to prioritize and where the values are in, in funding these. I think that'd be really helpful. Okay, let's see. We, I think Jason spoke to the efficiency of speed through our networks as a value of like vehicles being, you know, moved. And there, I think there it is. I think that's the value that we really need, that we're challenging today and really wrestling with, council and the community and staff. And we're working our way through it, but that's, that's it. You know, this project is massive, 26 lanes. Obviously prioritizing the movement of cars at the top. I do agree with the comments about induced demand. I feel like we're phoenixing flag, you know? And it's, it's not good. And that we have an opportunity to be a leader, like Councilmember Aslan said, you know, let's, let's, let's do this. Let's show the state and the nation what we can do in Flagstaff when it comes to this big shift that we keep talking about. We really have that opportunity because of our community and the size of the community. Okay, I'm basically done. I just think in closing, we need to fix this, not only for Lone Tree, but for all of our projects. So we really need to evaluate what the values are at the core of our efforts here. And, you know, I guess to our, our team, I ask, what, what's broken here, and how do we fix it? You know, that might be a Rick question, but we fundamentally need to change, to see the change, we start changing things, to start seeing designs that come forward with more of a multimodal value at its root. I do wonder if a consultant, to look through our engineering standards, different guiding documents and, and, you know, TIA's and, and whatnot, and, and our speed allocations and our road types, would be appropriate to help us, you know, have the tools we need to really be successful moving forward, rather than having this wrestling, you know, uncomfortable discussion with every project we're investing in. Anyways, those are my comments. I know it's a lot, and I apologize if it's not what folks want to hear, but I, I think we have some work to do still on this, and I look forward to the future conversations. But I guess in, in closing, closing, Mayor and council, I think what I'd like to see us do really is send this back, send staff back to go work with sustainability, to work with our, our, our team in multimodal, and, and really come back with a, a plan that better brings those values to the top and prioritizes those values. I think that they have the tools they need. We just need to empower staff to do that. I think we can. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, Christine and Jason and everybody. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. You know, I'll, I'll be reiterating a lot of what I've heard from my fellow council members. It does seem rather daunting to be able to go over seven lanes of traffic in that situation. And it would be really good that next time we see this, it would be nice to see, okay, if I am a bicyclist going on this route, what is going to be my experience trying to get from point A to point B? So we can kind of get a visual of what the bicyclist's experience is going to be, to be able to get across these lanes, you know, we, with the refuges, with, with, which definitely I'm in strong support of being able to have on this project. Also, I would like to take a look on, as Councilmember Shimonie had stated, this just, this does change the equation for San Francisco Street and Beaver Street for potentially expanding our biking options there. And we need to explore that more thoroughly, and potentially that would create a better and safer route for our bicyclists and pedestrians who are going to use those roads more than probably the Lone Tree Overpass if they're going from NAU to downtown to Coconino Estates or wherever else. So let's try to take a larger view of this situation, and in that, we might be creating much better situation for bicyclists to have that area, and then the vehicles that are going to be concentrating more on the overpass. Next, we definitely need our civic space, and I know those discussions are already happening, but absolutely befitting with the Southside community and what their vision is for the art, whether they will see value in basketball courts or something else, or whatever it may be. This needs to be the big, nice, new park that people have been wanting for a while. Also, yeah, the, in general, you know, if it does come to, I would like to see the cost estimates for having those large medians and having these large of roads, because that is definitely part of my consideration with how many lanes we're going to have potentially. I'm not opposed to the idea of having the multiple turn lanes for, I mean, we also have to be, you know, realistic here, council, when we're talking 30 seconds and then sitting in, in front of a light for every vehicle. When we're talking 30 seconds and then sitting in front of a light for every vehicle multiplied by their carbon emissions from sitting there, that goes against our carbon neutrality plans, too. So we need to take that into account. 30 seconds with, what, 40,000 vehicles traveling there? That's a lot. So let's be mindful of that and not just say, hey, we want less lanes. So anyways, those are my general thoughts. And aside from that, I think we're, yeah. I appreciate everyone's hard work on this and look forward to how this develops. Councilmembers else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Ms. Cameron, happy anniversary. Thank you for your service to our team Flagstaff for the last 20 years. And that gratitude also extends to the entire planning team, team of engineers on staff, and the consultants. Thank you. First, let me, let me refresh the purpose of Lone Tree Overpass. It's part of the Lone Tree Corridor that was approved by Flagstaff voters in 2018. And the Lone Tree Overpass is the masterpiece. Ms. Cameron mentioned that we have $73 million for the construction of Lone Tree Overpass. However, the total cost of Lone Tree Corridor is $106 million. That of course cover the Zuni drive to JW Pubble and of course Lone Tree and I-40 bridges. So the Lone Tree Corridor serves the needs to provide safe, graded, grade-separated railroad crossing, artillery connection alternate to Milton Road, alternate access to NAU, missing pedestrian and bicycle facilities. The Lone Tree Corridor includes a bridge over the railroad, as mentioned earlier, widening from two to four lanes, sidewalks, trails, bike lanes. So the Lone Tree benefits Flagstaff and the entire region. It will provide less congestion to downtown, access to future growth areas, improved pedestrian and bicycle mobility, more effective evacuation routes. So just kind of refreshing our memory why Flagstaff voters voted for Prop 218. And Flagstaff voters' desire to tax themselves to fund this project was reverberated in the recent Flagstaff Community Survey, whereas mobility and transportation remains the number one priority in terms of public spending. So that includes transportation, mobility, and traffic and roads. Last week, I was at the ARTAC Summit, as I mentioned earlier, asking our state legislators to match our local funding for this project. And I heard Flags Federal Highway Administrator mention, and I quote her, "Transportation is not important for what it is, roads, bridges, trains. Transportation is important for what it does. Get people where they need to go and connect them to opportunities. Transportation shapes and supports the economy of communities and regions." So going back to this presentation, I'm not gonna go into the minutia of every details. I have 1,000% confidence on our team of expert. But I would encourage the team to conduct further community outreach and engagement, especially with our commissions, as well as the general public and partners and stakeholders, such as the business sector. I understand there's a pending economic impact study that will be put forth soon. So please keep doing that. And also, keeping in mind the convergence and alignment of goals of the city, of our partners, especially with BNSF and ADOT, for which part of the projects they will be directly involved, and of course, our partners with the community, the South Side Neighborhood Association, and also aligning this masterpiece with the overall goals of council, as well as the previous priorities and plans that we have adopted, such as the carbon neutrality plan and the active transportation master plan, which is underway, as well as incorporating it with the housing plan that is also being developed. So again, it's the alignment and convergence of our many goals and priorities as a community. Keeping in mind that this project benefits not only the city, but the entire region. And I would also kind of echo what I heard from our Parks and Recreation staff yesterday. When we're faced with projects of this magnanimity, we have to embrace innovation, collaboration, and how we align and converge our goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers else. Do we have anything else, Council, or Councilmember McCarthy?
So I heard some discussion about maybe we should make this a two-lane road instead of a four-lane road. I don't support that.
City manager.
I only offer this for clarification. I believe the reference I heard to two lanes, I thought I heard reference to maybe revisiting the profile of both San Francisco and Beaver at some point in the future if traffic is greatly reduced. I am not sure, Councilmember, that I heard a recommendation tonight to see Lone Tree Corridor go from four to two lanes. I could be mistaken.
Well, that's the way I read it, and I'm not sure. As far as should we take this as an opportunity to reevaluate what we want to happen on Beaver and San Francisco in this area? I'm very open-minded about that. I think that would be a worthwhile discussion.
Yeah, I think maybe that some of the confusion was with the greenhouse gas emissions. It showed us what would it look like with two lanes rather than the four. But really, the only discussion that I've been hearing from cutting down lanes would be, you know, having one left-turn lane as opposed to two left-turn lanes with some more refuge or something to that effect. So that's what I gathered, at least. And I'm seeing nodding heads, so.
I was trying to be very specifically non-prescriptive and just with general courses of encouragement and challenging to continue our downshifting as to where feasible and where possible, and to keep in mind that we could just be subsidizing more traffic if we don't do this the right way.
All right, anything, any other clarification needed from staff? You good?
We're good.
All right.
We'll be back before you.
Sounds good, thank you much.
Thank you for the input tonight.
All right, that brings us to Agenda Item 15A. This is our future Agenda Item Requests, a citizen's petition requesting the council's approval of a character overhaul of the South Side neighborhood. And we have two individuals online to present this. Sean Golightly and Anna Hamerel?
Yes, hello.
Hi, Sean Golightly.
Hello, Council.
Go right ahead, we can hear you.
Very good, thank you. Hello, Council, good evening. My name is Sean Golightly. I appreciate the time to speak today on this Agenda Item Request. So I'd like to just briefly give a description of what, how this Agenda Item Request came about, what it involves, and what we're actually requesting for. So the request is for a, is for a council to work on a character overlay for the South Side community, the South Side neighborhood. So this request came about organically through a lot of neighbors here in the South Side community, of which I am one. I live in the South Side with my wife, who is actually currently expecting child at the end of November. Anna, who is also here tonight, is my neighbor directly across the street. She is raising her young child Iris. And we are connected and friends with a lot of the neighbors that we live with in the South Side community. Months back, it came to our attention that the way development was progressing in the South Side neighborhood was, had the potential to, for lack of a better word, get out of control. That is, to see the South Side developed into a place that would not necessarily be habitable for families. And as people who were fortunate enough to buy homes here in the South Side neighborhood many years ago, when it was much more affordable, we have put down roots here and we intend to raise our families here. Iris, Anna's daughter, is learning to ride a bicycle through the streets. And as I said, I'm expecting child myself. And I would like to very much see this be the home that we can make for our children. As some, as my neighbors and some of the other families in the South Side community started becoming aware of what was happening with, you know, development in the South Side community, we started getting together and trying to come up with what we could do as neighbors to try and have some input into the way that our neighborhood was being developed. We know that development is gonna happen, there's no stopping that. But we decided that we could probably, you know, group together as a team and figure out some way to have a say in the future of our neighborhood, in the future of our families' lives in this neighborhood. And we worked with some people, including Heritage Preservation Officer Mark Ravis, who I believe is also in attendance tonight, to come up with an idea of using a character overlay that would take standards and guidelines built collaboratively through South Side neighbors and using this character overlay to essentially just enact some kind of restraint on the degree to which our neighborhood can be developed. So to that end, we started having, oh.
Thank you, Sean. Could you tell me what you were, what you said you were starting to do, or how it started?
Yes, so we got together in groups and we started planning meetings, as you know, as neighbors do. We invited Mark Ravis into our meetings, and we started conceiving of this character overlay. At this point, we reached out to lots of other neighbors, including the South Side Community Association and Deb Harris, who is actually in attendance there as tonight. And through all this, we kind of garnered consent in the idea that we would like to pursue an overlay for the neighborhood. So what I'm really asking for tonight with this petition that has been put forward in council is to really take this South Side community overlay and work it into the action plan for future meetings. I think council will agree that what we're talking about in terms of a character overlay that is looking for historic preservation and sort of just quality of life preservations for the neighborhood is very much in keeping with the South Side community plan. And so I think that adopting a work plan for this character overlay for the South Side neighborhood should be something of a no-brainer for the council. So we would like to see, as I said, a, we would like to see this, this community overlay worked into council's, you know, this item advanced into council's future work plans.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions from council? All right, Anna, if you would like to speak, the floor is yours.
Hi there, thank you for hearing us tonight. And I think that what I just would like to add to what Sean has already said is that, you know, this has been really a wonderful effort to be a part of, and it's been an effort that has kind of, you know, spread throughout the blocks here on the South Side, and we've gotten to talk to a lot of our neighbors. And so I'm sure you'll see there's a letter and there's also a petition that we've had a lot of folks sign. And, you know, I think there's a lot of support for this in the neighborhood, and a lot of folks have sort of been waiting for something like this to come about. So it's been my pleasure to be a part of it, and I hope that the council is supportive and asks any questions that they have and that we can move forward with it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions, council?
I have a procedural question.
Yes.
So if we, if we move forward with this, then is the next discussion whether to have this overlay?
If I may, I would suggest if there's a desire to move forward, we probably should start that discussion in the future with a work session and have a lot more information about the overlay process, what that could look like. There's a lot of newness to this, so maybe a work session would be a good starting point.
Yeah, I'm a little, sorry, Councilmember McCarthy?
So I don't know if tonight's the night to ask this question of Sarah Dector, or if it would be in the work session, but I guess I would want to know what the interrelationship is between a character overlay and the South Side plan. So I don't know if that's appropriate. Could you maybe just speak to that?
That's what I was about to ask.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna request her assistance in talking through this a little bit as well.
Thank you, Mayor Deasy, and Councilman McCarthy, the rest of council. The South Side plan identifies several historic focus areas. Can you hear me okay? Sorry, thank you. The South Side community plan identifies several historic focus areas on the, in the goals and policies. They, the recommendation for them is that we work on overlays and other zoning protections for the historic properties in the neighborhood. So this is what's been petitioned for tonight, is one of several ways that that can be accomplished. I know Dan Seimer is also available on the Teams meeting virtually if there's specific questions about differences between zones and other things, but that can also wait for a work session.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Soss.
Thank you, Mr. Mario. I will support this fair attempt to move forward to a future council work session.
Thank you, Councilmember Soss. Councilmember McCarthy?
Yes, I think this is worth, worthy of some future discussion, at the very least a work session, so that we can thoroughly understand the potential benefits, the trade-offs, how it interrelates with other plans, the whole, you know, just make us smart on this.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'm in agreement as well. I saw this and I just, I have lots of questions. Technical zoning, how it fits with the South Side neighborhood plan that we need to make sure we are sticking by, and I'm willing to have that discussion. Actually, I'm pretty intrigued by what that all means from the more technical administrative side and how we, what we can do. So I am in favor of moving this forward. I see a non from Vice Mayor. And, wait a minute. All right, we are good to go then. And Sean, congratulations, by the way. I didn't say that after you spoke. Oh, Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to comment that I'm in favor of moving it forward as well.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Well, with that, we are down to Agenda Item 15B. This is a fair request by Councilmember Shimoney to place on a future agenda a discussion regarding temporary urban camping in parks, along streets, public property, on private property, and in cars. Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yes, the funny thing, you know, about these, these next two fair items, as you know, is these are both ideas that were based in Eugene, Oregon, and I'm actually at the airport about to board my flight to Eugene to visit these efforts myself firsthand and learn firsthand from those involved. The pros and cons, what's working, what's not working. But, this first agenda requi, item request is about the temporary urban camping pilots, I believe they are, that Eugene is doing that are broken up into different categories. One being in parks, one being along streets and part, public property, and then one being on private property, and then the last one being in cars. And they're basically identifying options that are available and that they're allowing for to complement their, their camping ban that is in place, from my understanding. And so, I just thought this was really intriguing, that they went ahead with, with identifying solutions that I think were a nice middle ground way to move us forward, even with, at the City of Flagstaff, on this topic, which I know is extremely, you know, political and divisive and folks have a lot of thoughts about this. I feel like this might be a nice model for us to consider and, and, and look into as a council body. And, um, yeah, I'm curious if there is support and I'm really looking forward to visiting this myself firsthand.
Thank you, Councilmember. The rest of Council, that's.
Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shimoney, I'm wondering, you made the choice to make this very broad, and I'm wondering why that was.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, in my experience, I, 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 I want to keep things broad enough that we can have a discussion about whatever it might be, we might not, not to be constrained by the, the language in the fair. But I did specifically outline the different categories that Eugene also outlined in their approach. So, I did specifically hope that we can basically look at, you know, what they're doing, see if any of that makes sense for us in our own ways, and also be able to add to the idea, of course. Does that help?
It does, thanks.
Councilmember McCarthy.
I will note that camping is allowed under certain zoning conditions, like K O A has camping. So, there are provisions in the code to allow camping right now.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And Councilmember McCarthy, I would just respond and say, I agree with you. This is more for the unsheltered population that I think you, you understand is a area of concern for, um, just, I think, a lot of us in the way that we are, are co-habiting the, the town of Flagstaff. Anyways, um, yeah, I guess those are my responses to that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I would be okay with moving this forward for a discussion, but not saying how I would be, in the end, on the issue, I just know that this summer with the Raphael fire, we were scrambling. Making, making calls, trying to figure out where folks could go when all the national forests were closed down, ashes were coming down on us. We were trying to, I mean, Walmart didn't want the individuals in their lot and AU was able to open theirs up for a little while. But I was on the phone calls, calling churches, calling the Elks Lodge, trying to figure out a place to get some, just some location to go when the forests were closed. So, in that context, I can see some value in this discussion, but I, I think we, it might just be the two of us here, Councilmember Shimoney, unless.
Yeah, I hear you, my, my closing comment, Mayor, if I can jump in really quick, I agree with you. It's just that I've seen this as my, you know, my three years on Council, I've seen this topic come up and fail every time. And I get why that's like the case, but I really felt like this approach was the right approach to find that common ground and, and potentially expand our services for the community. Because you're right, we're gonna have a lot of time to refugees from time to time. There's also a lot of people living out of vehicles today. And it's a scramble, it's not a good experience and, and we rarely hear from them. We, we basically never hear from them at the council meetings. So, in getting to know them myself, I think that they really are excited about this idea that we're talking about tonight. But, if there's not support, just to have that discussion, then there's not support. And that's the way it goes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney, and part of that would be for me to also make sure that any of this type of route, if it did go on into the future, would have services available. And, um, yeah, I, I, I wouldn't want a free-for-all, basically. And make sure that people have what, what they need from restrooms or anything else. But, Vice Mayor.
If we, I'm open to having a conversation about having a dedicated space where, as the mayor spelled out, with services and whatnot, and also a plan for next summer, if the, if and when the forests are closed. I'm not interested in reopening this discussion about camping in parks or along streets. But if, if we want to focus on a specific location and a plan for what to do when the forests are closed, I'm open to that.
I see Sterling grabbing the mic here, yeah.
Mayor and Council, I appreciate the comment, Vice Mayor. The way this, and, and you asked why it was worded so broadly, the way this fair is worded isn't specific to situations like the Raphael fire, for example. It's very broad about urban camping in parks, along streets, public property. As a result, if there's a separate conversation that Council wants to have on that, it wouldn't be through this fair. I just want to make sure that is clear.
Okay, Councilmember Asson.
I just wanted to voice something that I haven't heard this evening about this. And that is that whenever we give the thumbs up for one of these things, it's a lot of work for staff. There's, there's an involved process that gets rolling. And I know that our management and leadership are happy to do whatever we ask them to. But it's just something to keep in mind and something that took a little bit of learning for the previous Council when several of us were new on it. And these things can snowball and add up and really become a lot of, if we're just given the green light to let these ideas move forward out of a, a sense of, of solidarity with each other, there really does need to be a filter that we apply to these things where we are serious about the conversation that is, that is going to be facilitated and the, and the possible direction that comes out of it. And I'm a little bit frustrated, I feel like we've had this conversa, you're, you're right, Councilmember Shimoney, this conversation has come up numerous times over the past two councils. And this community is not ready for that. And it's, I don't think it's appropriate to dedicate additional staff time to vetting this out any further until something substantial shifts in the general community's appetite for this sort of thing.
Thank you, Councilmember Asson. With that, I don't see we have direction to move forward with this. But I will kick it back to you here, Councilmember Shimoney, for Item 15C, request by Councilmember Shimoney to place on a future agenda a discussion about Eugene, Oregon efforts to house their unsheltered through the Square One Villages.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so, I learned about the Square One Villages a while back by some community members who brought this to my attention. And Vice Mayor, this might be more up your alley in what you were saying from that last agenda item in regards to a specific place and a specific effort. And there's a great website, squareonvillages.org, that really speaks to what they're doing in Eugene, but I believe it is all across the nation. And there's numerous spots that are providing this, and it's a self-governing tiny home community. And I'll just read the, I think it's their mission statement, "A collaboration between the housed and the unhoused that provides stable and safe places to be through cost-effective approaches for transitioning the unhoused to more sustain, sustainable living situations." It's a transitional tiny home village, thirty units on one acre is what they have set up. It's been in operation since 2013. The program fee is $35 a month, talk about affordable housing. There might be additional fees, I'm not sure. But again, I, I am gonna go out and visit this myself and, and see more about what they're doing. I am understanding, of course, of the fact that we have community partners doing different efforts with, with motels in our community. But this could be just another thing to add to the list. And also with, you know, Habitat for Humanity, their starter homes, this might just be another tool in our tool chest to provide the community. This is another topic I've been trying to figure out since I got elected in terms of how to, how to bring this forward and get something going that's government-backed. And I think that this is it. So, if there is folks and support, that'd be great, but if not, that's okay too. But yeah, I think this is really cool and a really cool opportunity and I do have some specific places in mind, Vice Mayor and Council, in terms of locations that the city owns. But, um, yeah, curious to hear your thoughts and if folks are open to this one.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't thoroughly understand what this is, but I do think it is worth a discussion. You know what I should have done before this meeting, and it didn't even occur to me when I read this, is maybe look up Square One Villages and, you know, educate myself about what it is on the web. But, I think maybe if we do move forward with this, that might be the first step, as opposed to investing a lot of staff time on it. So, I would be willing to go at least that far.
You, Councilmember McCarthy. Vice Mayor.
So, my first comment is, I would be more comfortable with this if it was brought to us by our community partners. I, I'm open to having, I'm open to having the discussion. What I'm, um, what I don't want is for us to be creating new programs up here. But if it's, I mean, if this is something that is contemplated in our community by any of our community partners, I would feel much better knowing that there's some support for it out there and that people have been thinking about this.
Councilmember Asson.
I, I, I don't like to be overleap when I'm up here. And that's because I'm not an expert on much of anything. But I do carry a community voice forward. This, this just feels a little bit too prescriptive to me. It feels too specific, it feels programmatic in one particular direction. And I think it's an intriguing idea, I don't know how to navigate moving forward with, with some of the concepts here without bringing this Square One Village model specifically into the process. And my concern is that our staff is gonna be moving forward researching Square One Villages. And I just don't know that that is, as a surgical approach, the, the, the correct way forward here.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Soss.
Mayor.
Oh, Councilmember Shimoney, if you'd like to respond first before I turn to Soss, you're welcome to.
Is that okay if I quickly respond?
Yes, that's fine.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Asson, I, I hear you and I, I agree with you to an extent. What I've learned is, is often it's easy to start with an example that's similar and learn about that. And by going through that process of learning with staff and with the community, the, the right approach appears. And we can pivot at that point and, and work towards the right approach that maybe is more what you're thinking, but that's down the line. We're not there yet, you know, this is, so I, I identified this as an example to, to research and start with. But I could see this shifting at some point, depending on council direction and, and, you know, the Vice Mayor's point, community input and community partners that might be able to, you know, help partner with us in this effort, so that it's not an additional program to the city. I mean, there's a lot of flexibility moving forward. I just thought it might be good to start with a, an example that's working and proved. Anyways, just wanted to add that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Soss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share the Vice Mayor's and Councilmember Asson's perspectives. I don't support this as, as a, as a fair, but this can, this type of conversation can be put of, can be discussed at the current housing plan, discussion that we are having as a community. Because I would like to hear from our, from our partners and, and of course, our housing staff and Housing Commission as they, as the community, the housing staff and the commission and the stakeholders involved in, in, in developing the housing plan, if this is one of the many options, solutions in addressing homelessness and that, that whole spectrum continuing, continuum of service from, from homelessness to homeownership. Thank you.
You, Councilmember, Councilmember McCarthy.
You know, maybe the best thing to do at this point would be to send this to the Housing Commission and say, could you guys take a quick look at this and see if it has any potential and if it would fit into the bigger picture of what the Housing Commission is doing, rather than us addressing this as a specific idea. I mean, I'm, I'm gonna look this up on the web, I'm curious about it at this point. So, I, I, that's kind of what I'm thinking, send it to the Housing Commission and see if they could, you know, spend a little time on it and.
And if they can conjure up or identify stakeholders who are interested in.
Absolutely.
Sponsorings, something like.
Well, that, that's kind of what I meant when I said, have it tie into the, the broader goals that the Housing Commission has. There may be potential there, I don't know, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. I did go to the website and it actually is a, a very informative and beautiful website. And I would recommend that we all take a look at it. And, and I agree with Councilmember McCarthy that the Housing Commission should be the ones to investigate this. But the website is very easy to read, it's got photos, it, it has a wealth of information, so. My two cents, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Well, I'll just say, I know, I know we've chatted a couple times about this, Seanie, and I really, I really like this concept and what we've looked at. I do think it would be good to kick the idea into the community, you know, with the service providers, holding the meeting here in a week or two, to discuss really housing primarily, as well as all the conversations that are going on right now. I think it, this definitely needs to be part of the conversation, I really like the idea. At this time, I just, I think it needs to start there before we devote staff time to it. So, let's kick this to the community and I would, I would love to see something like this in, in ours. I just would like it to start from that community level. Councilmember McCarthy.
Mayor, that's.
Sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Shimoney.
Oh, I'll let Councilmember McCarthy go first, that's fine.
Well, I was gonna say, if we're not gonna formally move forward with this, and it sounds like we're not, the Vice Mayor is the council liaison to the Housing Commission. Could you, you know, at least have a discussion with the Housing Commission or staff about that and see if there's some way they can maybe look into this and see? I have a hint that there's some good ideas here. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and yeah, I appreciate the council discussion. And, and, yeah, I appreciate the council discussion that we're having tonight. So, you know, I'm in favor of this moving forward, however that looks. I totally support the ideas of going before commissions with this. You know, whether that's through this fair process or through Vice Mayor and the commission leading it, you know, and integrating these ideas. I, I just, I think that they're great things for the community and great ideas. And however we move forward is fine. I guess I was just providing one avenue for us to move forward, which is, you know, through the fair process, which is kind of a direct way to, to, to approach the topic. But maybe not always the best. So appreciate the dialogue and the comments. And I look forward to reporting back to you all on what I learned from being there on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. And I, I do appreciate you bringing this to all of our attention in a public forum like this. And it definitely gains, I can say for all of us around here that it definitely catches our eyes. So thank you for bringing this forth. And I look forward to those future conversations in a, on a different platform to begin with. All right. We are down to Agenda Item 16, informational items too from mayor, council, and staff in future agenda item requests. Why don't we start online, folks? Councilmember Sweet, and then Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have anything tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimoney.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Good discussions today. I know that we had some hard discussions. And I just want to say gratitude to our C staff for sticking with it and sticking with us and the community and working through these things. I don't think I have too much to add tonight, other than that. But, um, yeah, I hope everyone has a nice week. And I will be in rainy Eugene, riding around on a bicycle, which I'm planning to buy tonight. Be well, and Councilmember Sweet, enjoy your time in, on your trip as well. And looking forward to being back with everybody soon. Have a good one.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let's go for Councilmember Assland. Anything tonight?
Nope.
Go.
Keep it simple.
Vice Mayor.
I looked at the working calendar, and I don't see any kind of presentation from Northern Arizona Healthcare on their proposed new campus. Can we have a presentation from them?
Thank you for the question, Vice Mayor. I did have a meeting with Stephen Ice, East, Ice. And the, he has indicated that he's been reaching out to individual council members to provide that information. There's, in his words, there's, there's not a lot of, of additional information to provide beyond that. I did suggest the idea of a future work session. That is not off the table, but he indicated a desire to meet individually with council persons. I don't know if you've been approached by him. If you, it looks like some heads are nodding yes. But that was my response from him. Thank you.
And you asked him specifically about coming to a work session?
Yes, I was on the DBA Board when he presented to them a few weeks ago, and I thought it was an excellent presentation. It actually was not him who was presenting, it was another gentleman. But, uh, you know, I thought a similar presentation to this council would be good. I will continue to pursue that if that's the desire. You know, I don't think it's the end of the discussion by any means.
Thank you. I, I think that the public would enjoy having a presentation and being able to see their plans at this point. And I have met with them, and I think probably most of us have. But I think that the public would enjoy it as well.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Vice Mayor? Councilwoman McCarthy.
Well, just to touch on what the Vice Mayor was saying, I think the public needs a forum to understand about the new campus. Now, if that's being provided some other way, maybe we don't need to have it here. But if it's not being provided some other way to the general public, then it would make sense to have a presentation to council, not so much for us, but for the public. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow is the Exchange Club event honoring our law enforcement. And then on Thursday is the Discover Flagstaff Annual Tourism and Economic Vitality Stakeholders and Partners event. And then Friday is, uh, learning about Aquifer Testing at Fort Tutt Hill Well Number Two. And our board meeting on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, a couple of things. I'd like to put forth the future agenda item request regarding a, and I'll word this accordingly later, but a rebate program for solar on people's homes, similar to what we are doing with electric vehicles in town. I think this is a great way for us to help incentivize alternative energy in our community and to get more solar panels on homes. So I'd like to put a future agenda item request for the opportunity to discuss a solar power rebate program or alternative energy rebate program, similar to the one we are running for electric vehicles. Aside from that, that about, that, yeah, that was the main thing I wanted to talk about, so. All right, City Manager, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do not. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.